Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the Lowell School Committee to honor. Please join me in honoring America with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Laraba.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Milonazo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a continuation of our budget hearing started last week. What's the wish of the committee? Should I recognize the superintendent to give us an update as to where we are at this particular point? Chair recognizes Superintendent Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the conclusion of the last meeting, we did agree tonight to go through our budget page by page and have the committee vote that. In conversation with you, Mayor, it is my understanding that we agreed that at this point, if we go through page by page, you would ask the committee their vote per page, and then questions would be directed to myself and to Mr. Lang.
That's correct, yes. At this point, I again would also open it up for the public, those wishing to speak as we go through page by page. Please come to the microphone, give your name and address, and if you recall, we do have a five-minute rule here. So, we certainly appreciate your being here and your input. The chair recognizes Assistant Superintendent Lang.
Okay, thank you. On your desks this evening, you have a new yellow section. That is the third section of your budget book, the system-wide budget, and this section incorporates all the changes to the budget to date, and I just want to give you a quick update on those. So, this includes the approximately $4 million in cuts rolled into the various accounts from last week. So, that's in this yellow document, as well as I've been working with the city, in particular, Tom Moses, the CFO, our health insurance costs obviously went up this year, and we had been taking, because we didn't have the final number from Crook &amp; Company at the time, we had been taking $11,003,01 as the average FTE savings for health insurance, but actually that number, under the new plans and the new rates, increases to just over $13,000 per individual savings. So, there were 65 and 1/2 positions that were included last week. So, I've gone into the health section, so when we get to that page, I'll explain that to you, but I've increased that offset by the differential between the 11, 3, and the 13, whatever that number is, and I'll get there when we get there. The last significant offset, or two things, if you look at the first page, the city, we're assuming still we're building the budget on the House numbers that came out, so that's the $114,495,103, and the offsetting 2.239843 in the fiscal stabilization fund. Now, the Senate budget numbers were slightly higher for Chapter 70, but they were directly offset with stabilization. So, when the city put their budget together, they used the 114 for Chapter 70, so just to be consistent, that's the number we used. Obviously, if the Senate number prevails, we'll receive more Chapter 70 but less stimulus, it'll be a direct offset. Last year, the city's cash contribution to the schools was $15.4 million. Yes, it was. It was $15.4 million, and this year he is recommending, it's my understanding, an increase of just under $1.1 million, so $1.7 million. So, that new number has been input as well. The last major change we're going to see when we come to the, pretty much the end of the budget around facilities, again, in working with the city, I had been budgeting, well, to take a step back for a minute, next year is the first year that we're going to fully implement that AMRESCO performance contracting in the schools. So, we're going to see a savings in the utility costs from those particular projects. And I had, in my mind, knew what the savings was going to be, but also there's supposed to be an offset, and whatever the savings were, we're going to go pay down the debt service associated with those projects. The city is actually budgeting the savings of those particular accounts in both of their lines, and they're offsetting the debt service totally separate from the budget through a bond. So, in meeting with Tom and Cheryl, the city auditor, I asked them, based on my projections and theirs, where they actually felt our utility should come in, based totally on the savings. So, if you take the two major accounts, which are the natural gas and electricity together, it's approximately $1 million in total savings, and what we're going to do, and I'm going to recommend you do, is we'll take those offsets when we get to that particular page to have the budget truly reflect the amount of actual natural gas and electricity we'll be paying. On the city's side of the budget, through debt service, they'll be paying down the AMRESCO project. And again, I didn't want to muddy the waters with the budget, but once the budget is finally done and complete, I'll recommend that the committee transfer those two line items to the city to be managed, because the city's hiring a new energy performance person who'll be managing all the city contracts. We'll let them just actually take the burden, really, for the schools' projects and the way that all AMRESCO performance contracting is going to work, but we'll do that separate from the budget. So, the only thing we're going to take is the actual offset to true savings in the school department accounts, and after all is said and done, we'll do a budget transfer sometime in July along those lines. But when we get to that particular page, I can show it to you. But where we stand today, what it means to us number-wise, we'd started with $141,283, 542 as our level service budget. Through the various cuts, again, that's your $4 million plus the utility offsets, plus the increased offset for the health insurance savings for the 65 and 1/2 FTE counts, we're down to a budget that we'll go through tonight, line by line, of $136,555,345. So, that actually is just about a $1.1 million gap or difference between the total city contribution in the bottom of the box of $135,400. I can answer any questions now, or we can talk about it as we go page by page through the budget.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Lang. On this that we just received five minutes ago, is the only identifying cut on page six with the teachers? It's in parentheses? Is that?
If you look at-
I assume that that's a cut, correct?
Yes, that is a cut.
Okay.
The second section of your budget called recommended adjustments, if you pull up, and I would recommend you all, pull out pages four, five, and six right now, because those recommended adjustments go in order of the budget book pages that we will go through. So, what I have done over the weekend is incorporate all of those proposed reductions that we voted on in the last meeting. I've rolled them into the yellow system-wide budget. I made it yellow just so it'd stand out from your white pages. And what I propose we do is start with page one, the 1100 series for school committee. There are no recommended cuts on that page. The first recommended cut comes on page four. And just go page by page. When it comes to a page where there's a budget reduction that has been taken, the superintendent or I will notify you that that page does have budget reductions. I'll walk you through what the reductions were, and then vote a bottom line for that particular page, and do that for pages one through 25. Any answer questions as we go along?
Is that okay with the committee? To go that process page by page? Okay, okay, fine. Anybody from the public? Mr. Leahy.
It's kind of hard to hear with the fan, so pull out what pages?
It's page four, five, and six of the-
Recommended?
Recommended adjustments, pages four, five, and six. And then, as we go through the system-wide budget, the first page will stop on, and we'll certainly talk about each page, but the first page that actually has adjustments is page four. So, when we get to page four, I'll notify you there was an adjustment on that particular page. We'll talk about it, debate, and then decide what to do from that point.
Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Mr. Lang. I just want to make sure I understood his opening comments about the energy savings. I understand that the city's moving to this energy savings program with AMRESCO. Are you saying that we are going to reduce our deficit by $1 million because we no longer need that for utilities? Was that?
In essence, yes. Both the city, again, I haven't looked at the city budget, I think it just came out an hour ago.
Right, just came out minutes, yeah.
Just came out minutes ago. Both the city budget, as well as the school budget, will reflect the true savings in utility costs that are realized through those AMRESCO performance contract enhancements. For us, we have some solar panels going in this summer, some EMS systems in the schools to monitor usage and things of that sort. So, both budgets will reflect that. And the cost for the actual debt for the construction, say, of the solar panels will be handled through the city's, the exact term slips me, but the debt management part of their budget. Correct. But what I'm saying is, after all is said and done, we certainly hope to see the savings that we're going to budget, and I've worked with Mr. Moses on those savings, but we're going to move those two, or I'm going to recommend that we move those two accounts under the attention of the city, so that both for next year, as well as years to come, with their new energy management person, they can be tracking and monitoring and budgeting for those accounts. Whether we directly spend the money and report it dollar for dollar, or the city does as a charge back to net school spending, there's no impact on the DOE reporting, so it really doesn't matter to us. It's an uneducational expense if it's paid for in the city budget, or if it's paid for in the school budget. And then, they'll also take the burden for managing that, which we, you know, isn't really our expertise.
Savings for us, then, $1 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
I just want the committee, as well as the public, to know that this meeting just occurred this afternoon, and they, when they were going through our budget, Tom Moses and Cheryl Wright, they noticed that we had always funded those two lines, the same we always did, not realizing that, in fact, it was going to be through debt service. So, I just want the committee to be aware of that, and in part, because it's something new, it's to our advantage for them to take the lines over in case there's a difference in the number at the end of the day.
Would my colleagues mind if I ask a question before we open it up? So, then, either Madam Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent Lang, the remaining reduction of $1,780,000, would that be satisfied with that transfer, or is that transfer already included?
No, that transfer is already-
Included.
No, I'm sorry, it's not going to be satisfied by that. Even after that, we're still $1,780,000 in the hole.
Okay.
Or $1,780,000 in the hole.
$1,780,000.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Larry.
Just wanted to thank the city and the city council for actually voting for AMRESCO and taking a look at it, because I know it was a controversial issue when you were looking at it in terms of where it's going to go. So, obviously, we're booking right now a $1 million savings, and the city's going to be taking the management that over, so if it, you know, if it doesn't deliver, obviously, they're going to live up to their bargain and try to work and manage that efficiently, and hopefully, we'll get more savings as we dive into it further. But I think kudos should go to the city council for voting for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let us begin, and again, I encourage the participants here this evening to come to the podium if they have a question on a specific page, and if you, again, need further clarification from Madam Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent Lang, please, just ask. So, again, I'll defer back to the superintendent and to the assistant superintendent to begin the process. So, I guess we'll begin on page 3A, or do you want to go?
Page one.
Page one.
Okay, I'm being told by the secretary that we need to actually put that in the form of a motion to go through the budget page by page. Chair recognizes Ms. Laraba. Again, if we want to do that, we can certainly, if people have signed up, if you have signed up to speak, maybe this would be an appropriate time for you to come forward and address your concerns to the committee, unless you want to wait until we get to a specific item of the budget that you're interested in. I'll leave it up to those that have signed up. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I think we should start at page by page and have people come up as we get into the pages. I mean, we did a lot of work last week, a lot of work was done today. The budget shortfall is a lot better than it was this morning.
Mm-hmm.
That's something, you know, that's quite manageable, and so I would say, let's go page by page, and then have people come up and speak on it.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion, then I'll recognize Ms. Laraba? Put that in the form of a motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Mr. Larry. Chair recognizes Ms. Laraba. Yes. Please state your point of personal privilege.
I'm the question of our board.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, I'm understanding that-
Is your microphone on? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
Understanding that I'm the new person on the board, and everyone has gone through this process several times, I still find myself with some questions about going line by line, and I understand we have the right to go line by line. I'm just wondering about the authority of the process, and I would like to request a decision from the council, the city solicitor, as to the process and how that works with ed reform. And I understand we can't get that tonight, but that's something that I would like to get a follow-up at some point.
Motion by Ms. Laraba to request an opinion from the city solicitor outlining our authority to go through the budget line item by line item, or page by page, seconded by Mr. Conway. Any further discussion?
A minute, we already have a motion on the floor, so it'd have to be a substitute motion if there would be a motion, or suspend, no?
Probably suspend the rules.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Larry, seconded by Ms. Martin, to discuss this and bring this forward for vote. All those in favor of suspension, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Motion on the floor by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Conway, to seek an opinion from the solicitor authorizing or identifying the authority that we have to go through the budget line item by line item. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think that to stop at this point and ask for an opinion would delay a process that's already been fairly cumbersome. I'd also like to say that, as I know we've discussed, the three jobs that the school committee has, one of them quite pointedly is the approval of the budget. To question this body's ability to do that, I find a little confusing, because it's fairly well-stated, and in running for this office, these are the three things that we're charged with doing. I'm not sure where the confusion is coming from, and if my colleague would like to explain that more, and the hand in the air makes me think she does, I would certainly welcome that, but I do think historically, we're all pretty well aware of what our role is in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba.
I'm not suggesting that we stop tonight's process, I'm just asking that we get a clarification down the road. In my admittedly limited research, the things that I found were, yes, we have the authority to hire and fire a superintendent, we have the ability to set educational policies and goals, and it says we have the right to approve the budget, but it does not, it does not say that we go line by line, and it does not say anything about the superintendent's authority in terms of setting the budget as, quote-unquote, "the CEO of the school district." So, again, this was just my limited research. I am therefore asking the professionals to just clarify that. I am in no way trying to stop tonight's proceedings. As people have already said, this is the way they've always done it, so far be it from me to put a wrench in that tonight, but I would like clarification going forward, especially since this is my first time going through this process, and I would just like to have, in the back of my mind, the assurance that this is indeed the way to go. And that's not, and that's not meant in any way to question anybody's process here on the committee. I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong. I'm asking for clarification as the new person on the board, because anybody can say the sky is blue, or this, that, I want to know from the official word that this is what we're doing.
Ms. Martin and Madam Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And yes, the sky is blue, so that's a good start. I just want to say that if there is being called into question a policy or a process that we use, I would not be comfortable moving forward. If there's a question as to what's legal, then we can't move forward until we know what's legal. So, if that's the intention of this, is to find out if what we're doing is legal and appropriate, if that's a legitimate question, and this body chooses to move forward with that, then I think it would be irresponsible for us to continue this process until we had that decision. So, it's one of those, we can't really have it both ways. If we've raised the question of legality, we can't move forward until that question has been answered.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is the school committee's authority and right to vote the budget, and it is my understanding the process that we're about to go through in the past, in speaking with Assistant Superintendent of Finance Lang, we will come to page one, and in this case, the mayor will say 1100 series for the amount of $64,823. What is the wish of the body? If there's something on that particular page that somebody takes issue with, at that time, we can discuss it, and it can be noted and voted up or down through a motion. In addition to that, it's also my understanding that even during the school year, if something comes up in our budget, that, let's say, we vote as something in the 1100 series here this evening, but there's something that comes up and you want monies reallocated to another, so let's say, the 2300 series instruction, then that would be a vote of the committee. Again, you'd like to move this amount of funds to that particular line item, but again, it's by your vote to do so.
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, and again, it has to do with seeking an opinion. Correct, or that's where we are? We should probably do a roll call. Roll call.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
No.
Mr. Larry.
No.
Ms. Martin.
No.
Mayor Milonazo.
No.
Mr. Conway.
No.
Ms. Dougherty.
No.
One yea, six nays, defeated.
Okay, let us begin. I think we had some young people come down from the balcony. Did you want to speak at this particular point, or do you want us to go page by page? Or begin? Did you want to come to the podium? Okay.
This motion is in the one floor.
Thank you. Right there, excuse me, right there. Name and address, please.
My name is Zafar Nizami, and I am a student of Lowell High School. Commitment to excellence in everything we do, academics, activities, and citizenship. This has been the mission statement of Lowell High School for years on end. As a current student within the school, my belief is firm when I say that each program at the school is highly significant in its own way. Ranging from Hispanic Club to Ballroom Dance Club, each program has its own unique benefits to offer. All numerous programs at the school solidify our mission statement and instill the sense of confidence in the student. In the face of our economic crisis, it is understandable to consider cutting all these programs. However, I implore you to consider just what is being disposed of. For example, the South Asian Club. As president of the club, I can proudly say that we, as a union, successfully spread our rich culture throughout the melting pot at Lowell High School. Not just South Asian Club, but far more many clubs as well. Personally, I believe that cutting the South Asian Club is something we may prevent. It is the third biggest club in the school, and it offers so much opportunity to each and every individual. The newly-elected officers are more than ready to lead and to share our rich culture within the school. It's been for, it's been around for over 10 years, and has had much to offer with each passing year. We simply want to provide a beneficial and fun high school experience in the light of Indian culture. Representing the South Asian Club, I can fully reassure you that it would be no mistake saving this club or any other program at Lowell High School. Why? Each program creates a rich experience for the student that will stretch far beyond their high school days. The variety of programs that the school offers molds a student into a citizen with richness of the mind. Numerous freshman sports teaches discipline and responsibility. AP classes challenges a student's ability and allow him to study a subject within, like, great depth. Benefits are endless. Culture of clubs teaches diversity and richness of background. Whether it be a language, club, class, or sport, each offers a quality high school experience. A program strengthens a student and provides many benefits. The question is, is cutting these programs worth hurting a student's high school education? The ultimate decision lies with you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pooja Mistri, and like Zafar said, I'm also an activist in keeping the clubs at Lowell High School alive. When I first came into this high school, I was told that clubs, sports, all this stuff keeps kids out of all the bad aspects of high school, and if you cut these clubs, then what are we supposed to do, you know? So, South Asian Club in specific is a really big club for our high school, and it's actually quite diverse, and we have a lot to offer. We've had years of tradition on keeping this club alive, and I believe this club should still be alive for years to come, because there's generations of kids sitting up here also that want to keep this club alive for a couple of years coming on, and even my siblings, and siblings that I know that are younger, also look forward to the high school for coming to the club, and besides the South Asian Club, there's also other clubs, such as the Hispanic Club and the Black Unity Club, which need to be kept as well. So, with your help, we can keep everything alive and keep the high school going, and we can keep kids from staying out of bad things. We can keep them from, you know, we can just keep them on a good path, and it'd be a good road for kids everywhere, for everything, so, thank you.
Thank you. We actually still have a motion on the floor to go line item by line item, so let me call for roll call before we continue to recognize the public. Roll call on the motion to go line item, page by page, line item by line item.
Ms. Laraba.
No.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Six yea's, one nay, passes.
Ms. Laraba.
At this point, Your Honor, to the superintendent through you, are we also going to address the remaining deficit of over $1 million tonight?
Actually, the plan was hopefully to go through the $4 million this evening, and then to reschedule a meeting next week, after, that will give us some time to work with our unions over the next week to fill that gap.
Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, a point of personal privilege?
State your point of personal privilege, please.
For a motion. The motion would be to close the Malloy School and to relocate the students to Lowell High School, and the reason why I'm bringing up at this particular point, because when we're going over the, when we're going over the cuts, it is completely intertwined in the entire, in the entire budget, so I thought it would be perhaps appropriate at this particular point to see if, if it passed, that I believe the savings was in the vicinity of about $800,000 to $900,000 if those students were relocated, so that when we went over the budget, we could be keeping those numbers in mind. If it does not pass, then so be it. We continue on.
The chair does not recognize that as a point of personal privilege. You'd have to move for substitution, or move for, to suspend the rules in order to discuss that. Is there a move to suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules.
By Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. You now can present your motion, Mr. Conway.
Yes. To close the Malloy School and relocate the students to Lowell High School.
You're second on the motion, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Any discussion? Mr. Leahy.
For discussion purposes, could the superintendent tell us the advantage of having the school out of the, from, away from downtown? It's been my understanding that the alternative school's always been not within the high school. It was on John Street before. I think there's a difference between the high, between the Malloy School not being run properly and closing it down and bringing it down to the high school. I think those children are out of the high school for a reason. I'm certainly in favor if there's any reorganization that you could see to save us some money, but I would not be in favor of bringing them downtown. They're out of the high school for a reason. They're, they don't belong at the high school, first of all. They're given a second chance, they're given the opportunity to learn at another facility and come back, but there's a reason why they're not at the high school, so I'd like to hear your recommendation.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. The alternative high school serves a very important purpose. The alternative high school serves a very important purpose for our students who attend there, and they are given a smaller learning environment that's safe, and they are there for a whole host of reasons. Everything from a discipline record to attendance issues, and many of the students who actually go to the Malloy School as an alternative school benefit greatly from a smaller learning environment. We have, as you're aware, the second largest high school in the state to have an alternative school that educates students. We have just over 100 children enrolled there on any given day. Attendance would be probably 50 to 60 students, and that's not a record that we're proud of, and we continue to work to bring those students to school. But in part, the reason why they're there is because they have very different, difficult lives for a whole host of social, emotional, and economic reasons. So, that alternative high school, a lot of work has been done. A lot of investment has been made by this committee to ensure that that small learning community is high functioning. Have we arrived? No. Does it work? Need to continue? Yes. There's been a lot of work, as reported out, in the Lowell High Subcommittee meeting eight weeks ago approximately, with regards to the curriculum coursework that we now offer. More courses so that students can graduate from there. So, a lot of good work has been done. But as we look at another very difficult financial year, FY12, the Malloy School, along with all of our alternative schools, again, have to be reexamined. We have to look at the way we service and educate our students in our alternative schools to ensure that we are maximizing, again, all of our potential. But to do it in haste or to do it incorrectly will have great financial cost to the district. So, when we look at closing alternative schools for children who have special needs, both emotional, academic, et cetera, to do it wrong can result in oplacement of students. So, it's not just the Malloy School, but we have other alternative schools that also come under this particular umbrella that, again, we are looking at coming forward. As the report stated, that was presented to the committee last week, as Committee Member Conway has stated, the staffing costs at the Malloy School are approximately $900,000. And we offer a full program at this time, both academic, and we offer social, emotional supports for students with the intention of them coming back ultimately to our high school. There are safety issues with regards to some of our students attending there and returning back to the high school. As the report stated, you know, at some point in time, if in fact that were the wish of the committee, then further study operationally of what that would look like at the high school would have to be explored. And again, that work is presently, many conversations have occurred between myself and Assistant Superintendent Murphy and the high school administration on this particular issue, but it is a work in progress, and I couldn't recommend at this time to the committee that that would be a safe or academically strong move for us to do for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand what the superintendent is saying. The Malloy School, the students from the Malloy School have been down the high school for a number of years, and a number of years ago, when we had some extra money, we decided to, through the administration and through the superintendent's office, decided to open up an alternative school, the Malloy School, where we did take some of our problem students, obviously, and put them there so that we could, again, give them that second chance. However, I think taking a look at the situation that we're in right now, we don't have that extra money. And what I'm recommending, when I take a look at the savings of $800,000 to $900,000, and we're talking about bringing approximately 100 students down to the high school, and it's my understanding that the high school certainly could accommodate these students, they could put them on a staggered schedule, we certainly have numerous resources down there that could handle the situation, at least on a temporary basis until our economy becomes a little bit, a little bit more fluent. I think also, if we take a look at the high school cuts that was recommended by the superintendent, we're talking about eliminating all the assistant coaches. We're talking about eliminating 13 teachers. We're talking about eliminating the student activities budget by $71,000. We're talking about the, a number of different situations down in the high school that certainly can hurt Lowell High School. We just had a couple of students speak, and I think that they summed it up when they mentioned that the fact that Lowell High School was something that we're very proud of the different sports, we're very proud of the different activities, and again, we have a recommendation of 13 teachers. This level of cuts at Lowell High School is going to affect hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students. What I'm asking the committee is to take this Malloy School, the 100 students that we have, and bring them down to the high school on a temporary basis, and when finances get better, we can obviously reopen that school. Again, I think we have to weigh out the situation and take a look at what's going to be lost at the high school. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. You know, I understand the perspective that Mr. Conway brings, and I think having the discussion now at the kind of front end of this makes a great deal of sense, so I'm glad we're having it now as opposed to as we kind of got deeper and deeper into this. Excuse me. I have to say, my concern, and I do think that the Malloy, the Malloy warrants attention, and there are some concerns that I certainly have about the program, but my concern is that the cost that would be associated with bringing, you know, it's not a cut-and-dried 100 extra students coming down into the high school. These are some of our students with the most profound issues and that need the most extreme support. And we've developed this program specifically to serve this student population, and I don't have the confidence that bringing them back into the high school could be done without having huge implications for those 100 students, more importantly, for the remaining 3,400 students that are at the high school. You cannot bring this, we can't close the Malloy, bring these students into the high school without expecting there to be serious repercussions in terms of the, just the way the high school will be able to run by absorbing this group. I look at what the Malloy has the potential to be, and I think it could be a huge, huge benefit, and could be run certainly in a more effective way so that we'd see more of a benefit. But I think the job that falls to the administration, and certainly perhaps even as school committee members as we watch this process, is to ensure that we're getting the most out of that program that we possibly can. And that's the job of fixing something. And I'm not comfortable eliminating that program at this point when I don't feel that the high school is in a place to effectively absorb it, and I think it would be a real loss. I mean, in my mind, what Lowell has done in terms of its alternative school programming has been extraordinary and has had a huge benefit to the individual students who have taken, who've been part of it, and to the general population, because I think that everyone benefits when people are in the right program. So, I would not be able to support the motion, but I would be very strongly in favor over the course of the year to this and all of our alternative programming coming under a very, very close scrutiny to ensure that we are getting the biggest bang for those dollars invested. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty, then Mr. Larry.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I don't need to repeat what my colleague said because I feel very strongly the same way. We're spending about $2 million overall in alternative school programs, if I go by this section of the budget, and I think it does behoove us to look closely at how effective those programs are and how more, if they could be more efficient, if we could be doing some streamlining. That's not something that's going to happen in the short term. It's down the road, and I would, you know, probably very shortly at one of our next meetings have a motion asking for specific data that really looks at student accomplishments and what we're doing over there with those programs. However, in response to Mr. Conway's initial motion, I have to say I do feel like we are very much at the bone with these cuts, and I want to say two things. First of all, in terms of athletics and student activities, my understanding, tonight we're cutting a number. Our plan is to go back and look at our athletics program and look at parity, making sure that we're fairly compensating sports based on the number of student participants and the needs of those individual sports, and the stipends that coaches and assistant coaches receive. We are not cutting all assistant coaches tonight. We are cutting a number from the athletics budget, and we are going to go back and do some work with our unions about, in my mind, how we keep all those programs and how we do a better job at fairly providing resources for all our athletic programs. And the same with the clubs. We have a list of clubs that receive stipends, and they're very varied in the amount of stipends and what's actually happening in those clubs with students. We need to look much more closely at the clubs. I know there are also clubs that have no stipends attached at all, that they're not listed here. So, again, we need to sit down with our staff and come up with a fair and equitable way to hopefully withstand the cut to the clubs and athletics and keep all those programs, but do it in a really thoughtful, measured, fair way. So, in terms of that, I'm okay. Some of these other cuts, as I know my colleagues share the pain, very difficult, very difficult to make. So, I would like to actually put forward a substitute motion. I don't know if my colleague would consider it a friendly substitute, but that would be to cut $100,000 from the Malloy School, which I think would be kind of like an opening shot, kind of what we did last year with the food service program. We cut $100,000, and we said, we know we've got to look at this program, we've got to bring our costs in line, we've got to look at efficiencies, we know we're going to be looking at the alternative programs. What that $100,000 does for us today, when we've got a $4 million, you know, deficit that, that's our goal, to find $4 million in cuts that are smart, that make sense for our ability to go forward and provide a decent quality education for our children. What I would like to do with that $100,000, and I know we'd need four votes to do it, but I'm thinking, keep the librarian. We need to have one certified librarian in the whole school district. So, I would like to, and we can, that would be a separate vote, my substitute motion is to cut $100,000 from the Malloy School. Do not blow up the program at this point. We need to figure out where we go from here. We need to take the time. We have a new headmaster coming on board. Let's do this thoughtfully. But what we do with that $100,000, we can discuss. I have my own goal. I'd like to see one library in the Lowell Public School, one librarian in the Lowell Public Schools, and I think it should be at the high school. So, my motion, I'm sorry to be so long-winded, is to substitute Mr. Conway's motion and cut $100,000 from the Malloy Alternative School. I would appreciate support for that motion.
Do you want a second? Ms. Martin?
I would second.
Okay. Second for discussion?
And if I, just in terms of the wording of it, perhaps say, cut $100,000 to be put in the suspense account? And then it can live there while we go through this process and then make the decision just so we don't, just so we put the money in another place.
So, you want to amend your motion? Okay? Amend your substitute motion?
Okay. Mr. Leahy? I'm sorry, Mr. Larry, I believe, first.
Thanks. I guess, so we do have a substitute motion, then, okay. You know, it's, I share Mr. Conway's frustration, because when I came on to the school committee, one of the things we tried to do was add positions to the Malloy Alternative. We added a guidance counselor. We added, you know, they never had a clerk, so we got a clerk. You know, the previous director up there was doing the job alone and doing a pretty good job, but there was areas where that director pointed out that were serious, you know, issues that, you know, she couldn't get to. So, we worked hard to bring some staff to it. We brought, I think we have three or four new staff members, including an attendance officer, you know, guidance counselor, social worker to that party, if you will. I sat down with Mr. Samaras and Dr. Jack last week when we were, to really ask, should we be looking at cutting the Malloy? And I think they had frustration because it wasn't meeting their expectations. I don't know if they would say they had a, it was a brilliant idea to roll it back into the high school, but they were clearly frustrated. This program should be excelling. One of the reasons why our school is excelling is because we have certain services for students who can't handle, are not appropriate for the Lowell High School. But when you walk through and there's only 50 members and there's 98 signed up, there's an issue. There's 48, you know, or whatever the round numbers, there's a huge absentee issue there. And these are questions that we need to dive into and really pull apart. Why is there continuously an absentee program? We put an attendance officer there. What's that issue? What is our graduation rate at the Malloy? There's a lot of different issues, and just bringing the whole thing wrapped up into the high school, when we made an assertive effort to bring it out of the high school for strong reasons, it's not a very, I don't think it's a move I could support. I will support the cut for $100,000, because I have to acknowledge, I have a lot of frustration. I thought it would run much more successfully than it is. It hasn't met our expectations. It hasn't met the headmaster's expectations. So, I think, looking at that operation, whether we start looking at, talking to Middlesex Community College, they have a program that we've spun off to them, and that's an alternative school, maybe they can be of value, I think we should be increasing students in these programs that meet their needs. But when we bring in four different Management Unit B positions to this school, and it's not run any better than when we only had one individual, that's a problem. So, I will support the substitute motion. I'm clearly not happy with the management of the operation. It needs to be run, I think, a lot more, much better. I think we put a significant dollars in there in the past few years, not only did extracting the numbers from the high school in years past, but also in the recent past three years. And in addition to it, I think there's also, one point, I don't know if it's actually a $900,000 cut when you have eight teachers, so if you're cutting eight teachers, it really kind of goes against the dynamic of, we're cutting 13 teachers, it kind of adds to the number. But I get the point of Mr. Conway. It's not run the way it has to run, and it is very frustrating, and there's no reason really for it. Thank you.
I need a motion, I need a second to Ms. Martin's amended motion, second by Mr. Larry. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. What was the last, we're talking about Ms. Dougherty's motion, right?
Correct, and then the amendment was to put the money in the suspense account so that we can move it around at a later date.
All right. The only question I would have, though, is, we did receive a report, and to ask to cut $100,000 out of there, I don't know where you take it from, because nothing really adds up to $100,000. So, you're going to be cutting into a couple of positions. We went through a lot of work to make that school work and to improve it, and it didn't I don't know if I can support cutting that. I mean, you're at bare bones at that school. You've got 100 kids that should be there every day, and they're not. You've got teachers, you've got a custodian, halftime, you've got a security guard and a resource officer. I mean, I don't know who you take out of there. I mean, the school, you might as well close the school if you cut that out there. So, you know, it just hasn't been run well, and that's the fact that we should accept and run the school the way it's supposed to be run. I can't support cutting $100,000 out of that because there's no way to cut it.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to address the committee on the fact that although we still have issues with regards to operationally at the Malloy School and things we would like to see improved upon, there have been great gains over the past four years at the Malloy School, and it does service and educate a very difficult population of students. And so, many of the students who, yes, we did put an attendance officer there, many of these students, even though we send attendance officers to our students' homes, we work with families, regardless of our attempts, some of them still do not report to school. So, I don't want staff to think that their work hasn't been noted. Recently, at a Subcommittee meeting, again, there have been big improvements in curriculum offerings, and again, that's a work in progress. I'm not sitting here telling you today that there's not improvements that need to occur at that school. We agree with that. But at this point in time, my recommendation is for the administration to continue to work on those issues, and in fact, if an administrative cut needs to be made, even though there's a 900, approximately a $900,000 staffing lineup for that school, to bring all those students back over to the high school doesn't mean you would not need additional staff, that's one issue. Two, the fact that the report in front of you, if in fact that needed to occur because of some financial crisis again in the future, it would be, you know, in an isolated way. of some financial crisis again in the future, it would be, you know, in an isolated way, it would be the suggestion of this administration, that'd be on off-hours, that would all have to be negotiated with the unions to go forward, to have an alternative day, so that these students weren't mixing with the general population of students. So these are all significant issues for us to address, but I'm just very cognizant of the fact that there has been a lot of good work done at that particular school, as well as your other alternative schools, and I don't want staff to get the impression that that's not appreciated by this administration.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, and I want to apologize for taking the time here. It's just that I, I think it's so important to take a few minutes to look at, again, the level of cuts that we are going to have to endure at the high school at this point. It's just, it's mind-boggling. It really is. And I think that, again, I understand what the superintendent is saying, that, you know, I went up there with another school committee person, and I found half the students absent. So I don't think it's that successful. And I also, when I take a look at the money that we are spending, and where some of that money could go to help alleviate the problems with these cuts, I think it's worth the time. You know, I'm sure that we're going to go through the budget pretty quick, but I think this is a, this is a little bit of a stumbling block. I would like to, when I just took a look out in the audience here, there's two key players. The headmaster and obviously Dr. Wendy Jack of Curriculum, they obviously would know whether this school, Malloy School, could be brought down to the high school in a safe fashion and an effective fashion. I'm wondering whether they could come to the microphone.
No, I don't think they can, Mr. Conway. We've already heard from their direct report that does not support the recommendations, so I wouldn't put them in that position.
So be it.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. Through you, I'd just like to address some of my colleagues' concerns. I agree, it's not going to be easy to find $100,000 out of the Malloy. But one of the things I think is important to note, that I've discovered, is, let's say, the guidance counselor position, which is listed as a $72,000 expense at the Malloy, that position actually covers two other schools as well. And the attendance officer position, which is also listed as a $72,000 expense at the Malloy, is shared with the high school. We only have one attendance officer for the district, for the high school-aged kids. So I think there is some room to find some savings at the Malloy without imploding it, and give the administration some time to look at what other changes might be necessary in terms of our immediate need being able to keep a position, and we'd have to discuss what that would be. But I think there is $100,000. We did the same thing with food service last year. We said, we'll start with $100,000, find, and I think it's a motivation, you know, that people get to the table and figure out what are the most essential positions that we have here, and how can we be more effective. It's a starting point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. If I could suggest, perhaps one way to make this more, to bring us all together on this issue, the $100,000, could I recommend that instead of us really targeting one specific school, excuse me, bit of a cliffhanger there, take a look at alternative schools in total, and say, we're looking at our alternative schools, and what we'd like to see is $100,000 savings from them in total. It allows the administration much more flexibility in your planning, and it still allows us to be able to have those savings. But it doesn't target one specific school population or school community, which isn't fair. I mean, that's...
Are you making that in the forms of a substitute motion?
You cannot amend that.
We have a motion, we have a substitute motion, we have an amendment. You can't do any more. You can't.
What about the original motion? Do we vote on that?
No.
First, it has to be the amendment first.
First, the amendment is first.
Just point, just to clarify, what we're asking, really, if you think about it, members, is that we're taking $100,000 and putting it in the suspense account. We can, that means we can, at the end of the night, we can do exactly what, if Ms. Martin's still here, at the end of the night, we'll be able to, we can take that, we can take that motion at that point, and take $100,000 out of the entire program and manage it efficiently. By putting it in the suspense account, it's not actually a direct cut, it's a cut that we can manage and discuss going through the month of June. That's only a suggestion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion as amended, roll call. I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
The $100,000...
$100,000 from the Malloy School will be put into a suspense account.
So we're not voting on the original motion?
No.
No.
Yeah? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
From, directly from the Malloy?
Yes.
Then I'd say no.
Mayor Melanazzo?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Three ayes, four nays, it's defeated. Now we go to the substitute motion, which is to cut $100,000 from the Malloy School, period. Ms. Lariva? To cut $100,000 from the...
That's what we just voted.
Just a point of clarification.
You just have to go back to the motion.
Oh, do them all, okay, so...
Not to put in the suspense, just to cut $100,000 from the Malloy School. That's the substitute motion.
I'm sorry, so just to clarify, we're voting on just cutting $100,000 from the alternative to put in the suspense account?
No. We voted that, or...
That one was voted down.
This is just cut $100,000.
Just to cut $100,000.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Melanazzo?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Two ayes, five nays, defeated. Now, on the original motion, to close the Malloy School and put those students into the Lowell High School. Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Melanazzo?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
One yay, six nays, defeated.
Okay, go, I'm sorry. Ms. Martin?
I would like to make a motion for, to recommend a $100,000 cut from the alternative school programming to be placed in the suspense account.
Second by Ms. Dougherty. Any further discussion? Do you want to be heard on this, you want to be heard on this, young man?
Sorry to go into the middle of a notion, but I just wanted to kind of speak while there was a little window open. My name's Vitoon Lim, I'm a junior at Lowell High School. I recently heard a number of my peers, teachers, and other acquaintances speak at the hearing of, for budget cuts at City Hall, like, on Wednesday, last Wednesday. Having spoken a bit myself that time, I know that there are many things that each person would still like to say after the five-minute allotment. Many people brought up good points to defend their groups. As I stood in line for the podium, we were asked to write down our names and our addresses on a sign-in sheet. But here's a part that bothered me the most. It asks us what organization we're advocating for. Why does this disturb me? It's because it files us away into categories and reinforces the status quo, which is something that the LHS does not advocate. I'm, this was on a letter, I'm writing this letter because I wanted to bring out one single point that everyone made in each of their speeches that we've heard so far. Keep LHS out of the mold. This is a reference to the phrase, breaking the mold. So how does LHS stay out of the mold, so to speak? Let's take a look at Tuxbury High School for a moment. It's already been through the process of budget cuts. However, the school has conformed to such budget cuts, and one of the programs that was cut was their band. Tuxbury isn't the only school that conformed to these same situations and lost programs due to such things. Many schools across America have seen these same things happening. It seems that these schools did not break the mold. Now, our beloved public school system is in the same situation. The hands of the government are casting our mold and are ready to pass judgment due to budget cuts. We can only hope that the school committee, along with our mayor, can help us protect us and our programs, and once again, break the mold. In past years, Lowell High School in particular has been unique, and has broken the mold several times. We were the first public co-ed high school in America. We were able to see our numbers among the top-ranking high schools rise to the 25th place in the Boston Magazine. Don't think, don't take this number for granted, though. We earned this number because of the quality of our classes, and the number of our classes, and the great number of activities that we host. For a public school with about 4,000 students, I'm not sure of the exact number, that's not just, that's not good, that's great. Another way in which our high school breaks the mold is that it offers us numerous activities in circles of, I don't know, classes of various levels. As you know, each club and organization in any school creates its own circle, and within its, within its circle are its people and the knowledge of that area. The circle can pertain to a graduating class, an academy, or a club. However, because of the unique organization of the school, students are not just bonded to one circle. In fact, the majority of our students find themselves mingling within many different circles. For example, a junior painting student can find themselves taking AP classes, being involved with robotics, the student council, and a sport like track. In all in all, the student is in the fine arts academy, painting classes, AP curriculum, robotics, student council, and sports. If you try to ask this student, oh, what are you going to advocate for? You're going to pull her, or him, in five or six different directions. This is a common scenario for most students in Lowell High, making it difficult for a student to be filed away in a status quo. However, programs are going to be cut from the school. There are chances that some programs may sputter and die for many years. Not only is this unfortunate for the students that are involved in that program, it places stress on other clubs and decreases diversity of the school, not to mention that the students of future generations will most likely be deprived. This is one of the metaphors that was made. Some can view budget cuts in the public schools as like cutting down a tree, where the root is the public school system, and the community is the rest of the tree. You see, there is really no point in developing a certain section of the community if you cut its root. Research is done by community developers at UMass Lowell that show that this high school in particular is vital to the community, to the growth of the downtown area. For example, if you cut the arts in the schools, then what is the point of developing arts in the city? If you like, cut off its source of people? Not to mention that the money that was invested into that certain area of the community could potentially be gone to waste. So what, so what is it going to be for us now? We are the students, the teachers, and the workers, and the residents of this community. Granted, budget cuts are a must in this economy, but we still need to invest in finding other solutions that are more appealing and more effective than canceling programs at the school. Our school is a special school. This is not because we have a big building or two, nor is it that we have a canal and park running through the school. It's made unique by the programs, the classes, and ultimately, the students that are in the school. History shows it. Today, the students are rising in our city to protect it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Again, this is to take $100,000 out of the alternative school programs and transfer it into a suspense account. Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six ayes, one nay, passes.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, why don't we take Section 1100, School Committee, on page one. The bottom line total is $64,823. What's Ms. Martin?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept page one with a total of $64,823.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six ayes, one nay, passes.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, why don't we take Section 1100, School Committee, on page one. The bottom line total is $64,823. What's Ms. Martin?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept page one with a total of $64,823.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six ayes, one nay, passes.
Under Section 1200, Superintendent, the bottom line for FY11 is $670,389. Need discussion? Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, just to make a note that the Assistant Superintendent Personnel and Recruitment position is no longer. We now have three superintendents, and I make a motion to accept the bottom line number of $670,389.
Motion by Mr. Leary to accept. Here's your second. Second by Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wanted to come forward? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just have one question on the in-state travel. What would that mostly be?
The dollar item, just for those in the audience and at home, is $30,000 for in-state system-wide travel.
Primarily, that's for our existing staff that travel between buildings, say, all of our teams, ETC, special ed folks, they do receive a mileage reimbursement for traveling.
All right. I just want to make sure that we are trimmed down on, we talked earlier about trimming down professional development or unnecessary going to conferences and things like that, right? So where, that we're going to trim that down? We had asked that we trim, take a look at that and trim that down.
Yeah, it wasn't, the, again, the in-state travel is pretty much our existing staff, just mileage reimbursement. If you note, we haven't spent significant funds on out-of-state travel. We had $10,000 budgeted this year, we're only going to spend about, a little under $2,000. I did knock that down to $5,000, because it's a trend that we're just not receiving. So we're not paying funds out of the local budget for people to go out of state on conferences or conventions. Generally, when they come before you, it's only for a specific grant purpose. If the grant requires out-of-state travel, to comply with the regulation and reporting mechanisms in the grant. But I did reduce the out-of-state travel to $5,000.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
I would like to say that Assistant Superintendent Lang has just mentioned, that isn't, given the district, our size, and as many professionals as we have, that is
I would like to say that Assistant Superintendent Lang has just mentioned that isn't, given the district, our size, and as many professionals as we have, that is a very, very low cost to this particular budget, and it is important for the committee to continue to support professional development, even if it is out-of-state. As you can see, we take it very seriously and we don't do a lot of it, but there may be in the future an occasion for that to occur.
Ms. Lariva.
I just want to clarify, the salaries are staying the same. I understand that they're not taking increases.
That's correct. The superintendent's contract has a 4%, that's zero, and the assistant superintendents have a 1 to 4, and they're taking zero as well, as reflected in the numbers in front of you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Have a first and a second, though?
We did.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't get it. Okay. And who seconded it?
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Lariva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Under Section 1400, Finance Administrative Services, I would direct you to page 3B. The total dollar amount is $2,893,249. Question, Ms. Dougherty?
Just going to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Dougherty. Here's a second. Second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Lariva.
Same question. It looks like the majority of these are not getting increases this year. Is that correct? I see some positions are, but several lines are carried over as the same.
Madam Superintendent?
That's correct. All contracts presently that the committee has that are open, for example, UTL and other big contracts that we have with our unions, we've calculated it will be a zero cost of living, as well as the contracts I just mentioned, although they're not open, we're leading by example. We do have some responsibility, step and lane, for some of our clerical staff, as well as other contracts, like the teachers' contracts, that would have step and lane. So I'm just talking about cost of living when I talk about COLA, which is a significant issue for us, but step and lane is still, because we do have to honor the contract with regards to that issue.
Ms. Lariva.
And just as a follow-up to that, we're seeing the $85,000 in the Director of Human Resources position that went against the elimination of the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, and that's correct?
Madam Superintendent?
That is correct. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
But it's also correct that it's the Assistant Business Manager position is really what we're doing. I think that's got to be added to the mix because it's more than, we're eliminating Assistant Superintendent position. What we're done is we've changed the Assistant Business Manager's position. We went over that in agnostium a couple of months ago, but when we say that, we got to make sure that we throw, make sure we put the whole package together. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Although Ms. Lariva is correct that the Director of Human Resource offsets the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, Mr. Leary's point with regards to, we did have an Assistant Assistant in the Business Office, which has now been moved over, as well as there was clerk job descriptions that were impacted, as well actually as many of our jobs were also impacted by that restructuring plan.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Page four, Section 2100, Department Heads Supervisors. The total dollar amount is $1,205,744. Mr. Leahy?
Did we take, there's three B in there, too. Did we take that all at once?
We did, yes.
Oh, we did, all right. Okay. Sorry.
We did three, I'm sorry?
Page four, right?
Page four that we're on now, the academic chair.
Okay.
Page four. Yeah, page four.
You're looking at page four, the white. Why don't you?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Bring us through this, Madam Superintendent.
I just wanted, Your Honor, to note that on the 2100 series, on page four of the yellow pages, which Mr. Lang passed out this evening, that is our first documented cut, which is number one on the by-budget book location, page four, and it's the elimination of the Fine Arts Chair at Lowell High School.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, unless you want Mrs. Santagati to speak? She's, oh, okay.
Okay, I'm Betty Santagati, 75, Fairmount Street in Lowell. I'm the current Chair of the Fine Arts Department at Lowell High School. I'll be very brief. I feel that eliminating this position is not in the best interests of the students and the teachers at the high school. I think that it's an important department. I think that the teachers and students over the past 12 years have demonstrated that they can rise to the occasion and become an excellent, if not the best, Fine Arts Department in the state. I don't see a good plan for any leadership to continue there next year, and I think that's a huge mistake. It's not about me, it's not about what I've done, it's about the people, the teachers and the students that carry on this program and work for the next five, 10, 15, 20, 25 It's not something, you heard from students and teachers last week, a lot of students and teachers, it will make a significant, it will have a significant impact if there's no one there in a leadership position next year, a very significant impact. We will go back, and I don't think we'll recover. I think that we have to make cuts that are easily recoverable after this financial crisis passes in one or two years. This is not the kind of cut where that will happen. This is a cut that will make a big difference for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. If my colleagues would permit, I have a question, a point of clarification, if I could. I don't even know who to direct it to, maybe Assistant Superintendent Lang, but again, last week, this committee approved these cuts, and tonight, we agreed to go through it line item by line item, but as a committee, we can't put anything back, as I understand it. We can, we can look at the other line items, but the cut that Mrs. Santagati just talked about was made last week.
Last, yeah, last week, the committee did vote to approve and adopt the superintendent's recommended cut, so they've all been rolled into the budget. The school committee, different from the City Council, actually has the right, as we go through the budget process, to increase or decrease specific line items, whether recommended or finally approved, until they actually vote the bottom line approval of a budget page.
That was the clarification I was looking for, thank you.
Okay, so you do have the right to discuss and also alter until you vote the bottom line.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Conway, then Ms. Dougherty?
I do believe, Mr. Mayor, that, that last week, we voted on the bottom line $4.1 million.
No.
Not the specifics, because that's when we talked about that we would be going over line by line.
No, we voted specific. We voted to support the superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Dougherty?
Okay.
But again, we can, based upon what Assistant Superintendent Lang said, we can make adjustments, but that was.
Okay. Here's the point I'd like to make. Last week, and up until 7:00 tonight, we did not know that we were going to have an energy savings. So why can't we dip into that line item and reduce that number to bring back some of these positions? Because, I mean, a million dollars, if we knew then...
It's already in here, though.
But we did not vote on that. I mean, to say, okay, we're going to take, you know, $900,000 in energy savings and we're going to keep, because that is a huge cut. It's a huge cut. And we didn't know we had the savings in energy. I mean, I'm grateful, it's wonderful, and I'm glad we're being a green city and saving money this way, but I think it changes the landscape somewhat, and I'd like to know what...
And again, with the point of clarification that Mr. Lang just provided with me, I mean, this is entirely now open for discussion and vote. Ms. Lariva.
I think we just need to remember that last week, we were looking at $7.5 million deficit, and we decided to hold the line at $4 million, and what Mr. Lang is saying is that right now, that deficit with the $4 million that we've got in here is really $5 million. We've got another million. He's already, he's already included that savings in that deficit, whereas last week it was $7 million, now it's $1 million, because we held the line at the $4 million. So that money is in there in terms of what we're still short. Correct?
Correct. I've recorded every possible savings we can going into tonight, and I've tried to have the budget document reflect that just as we go through, so it's not really a matter of not, not taking the savings. We would want that savings to go in to help that shortfall. This budget assumes, we've already taken $4 million in cuts, and we still have another million dollars in cuts to go. So everything you reinstate, as you go through the budget, you've got to have an offsetting deduction somewhere. We're certainly not at the point of adding back positions in the budget.
So before us, we have Department Heads, Section 2100. Again, the dollar amount is $1,205,744, which does eliminate the Academic Chair for the Fine Arts Department. Ms. Lariva, then Mr. Leahy?
I have concerns about losing the Academic Chair for the Fine Arts, simply because of the number of students that are served by that department and the fact that we have several department heads that are, that are juggling many different things. My concern is that we will find ourselves in a year looking at this similar to the Student Support's position, as that was a cut that we should not have made, and I think we need to look ahead over a couple of years. I agree with, with Ms. Santagati. Oh, I'm so sorry about saying your name wrong, but I think this is a cut that we would not recover from very quickly or easily, so I could not support that cut.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just had a question through you to Superintendent. I'm a little confused, because I thought that we came up with some sort of alternative plan that doesn't totally wipe this out, but there was some sort of alternative plan, and I thought that we were going to have the speaker back to support this plan. I mean, am I wrong in that, or...
Madam Superintendent?
As fully discussed here at the last meeting, there is a plan in place. We did ask all of our hostmasters to take over after-school events. They've all signed up for the administrative responsibilities of the musical, the fall concert, the winter concert, et cetera. Again, this cut is not taken lightly. We have asked basically again to stay on with us in the capacity next year to work and continue to work on fine arts initiatives throughout the district, so that that will help buy us some time and that we will still be able to work with our teachers throughout the system and our partners at UMass Lowell and Middlesex. But I cannot sit here and say that there isn't going to be any damage done by this cut. This is done in the context of last year and again next year, when we look at millions more, and again, we need to come up with plans that will do the least amount of damage, and we do have a plan in front of us right now that, I did speak with Mr. Samaras and Dr. Jack with regards to the evaluation of the 17 teachers that are in that particular department, and that they will be evaluated by the department chairs and the other departments and people with expertise in the areas of fine arts. Again, we can, you know, it's a very difficult cut to make, but it is a very difficult financial time.
Ms. Martin, then Mr. Conway?
Thank you very much. You know, and I know my colleagues know this, that in terms of this, this process, the fine arts programming, you know, at the high school and throughout our district is something that certainly during my time here on the school committee, I have been a very strong supporter of and continue to be. I mean, we're on page four of a 25-page document. We're just at the beginning. What I think might help our process is that, I mean, the reality is, is that this position has been cut. I recognize that. When we took the vote last week, that was the, that was the decision. The only thing left to this body to do would be to reinstate this position. What I'd recommend is that, as we go through this whole process, I mean, at this point, not to be too cagey about it, we've got $100,000 in the suspense account that in my mind could very easily solve this problem. I recognize that that's not the way we're, we're approaching this, but what I'd recommend is, as we get to, as we get through this whole process, there may be some things that come in and out, absolutely. In my mind, when we get to the bottom and we're looking at that suspense account, my motion at that point is going to be to reinstate this position. But I think that's going to have to be a conversation that we have collectively, obviously, and in my mind, it would be more effective if we do it after we've gone through this whole process. We certainly then would be able to make comprehensive decisions and be able to make comparisons that were kind of better informed, even just by having gone through this process. So I would be voting to, voting for this bottom line at this point, but in all, you know, just so my colleagues recognize, that when we do get to that point later on in the budget, my plan would be to try and reinstate that.
Mr. Samaras would like to be heard on this issue?
Actually, I'd like to support School Committee person Martin's request, because I did request this at the last meeting, that when the final number is given, that we look at that final number, what monies we have, because there are other choices. I mean, my librarian, I mean, you know, these are high schools without a library. I mean, this is a retirement position, albeit a very, very important position, we have to look at everything that we have to do. I do not want to be put in a position of cutting more teachers or other departments at this particular point, but I think her motion really carries a lot of merit. I mean, you're going to go, you're going to agonize over each and every one of these, and, you know, each one is going to get worse than the next one. And you're correct, I'd like to see this position back, because it has been a very important position. But albeit that, if I have to cut somebody else's position, doesn't make it easier. So I'd request that the school committee follow the superintendent's recommendations till the end, that we know what monies we have to play with, and then we can give you our best estimate from our perspective, and then the school committee and their wisdom can make the choice. That's my understanding.
Thank you. What's the wish of the committee on Section 2100? Mr. Leahy?
Vote the bottom line.
I'm sorry, I want to apologize to Mr. Conway. I believe he was after Ms. Martin.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Mr. Leahy to vote the bottom line on Section 2100, which is $1,205,744. This is on page four. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary.
Mr. Conway, I don't know if you wanted to speak on this as well. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I just...
No, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that we can go back to it, because again, you know, when I, when I look what happened last week, and again, I thought we were voting on the $4 million, and then we were going line by line, and that the number needed to go to the City Council to let them know that our bottom line was $4 million. I, last, it was certainly not my intention to be tied in to any specifics, except for the fact of $4 million. Thank you.
I just want to, all I want to do is echo what Ms. Martin said and Mr. Samaras said. I think, you know, we cut $4 million, but we have 1.1 to go. There's a lot of things I want to say. Librarians, absolutely, not just at the high school, but in the K through eight. I mean, that's, you know, we don't have any media technologies people in K through eight, which is absurd, okay? The sports program, I don't want to cut a dime out of it. Clubs, don't want to cut a dime out of that. I'll be looking for opportunities at the end, if there is an opportunity, to help work in those areas. So again, if, including the Fine Arts Chair, obviously, that's something that's, has more than just manages 17 teachers, it has other functions, large functions. So I think, as Ms. Martin, again, I'm talking too much. I just want to echo what Ms. Martin said and Mr. Samaras said.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva.
No.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Thank you. Go to page five, Section 2200, Principal's Office. The bottom line is $5,937,744. Ms. Dougherty? Move to accept by Ms. Dougherty. Do a second? Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
On page six, Section 2300, Regular Education Instruction Classroom Teachers. The bottom line number is $48,46,112, and I can refer you to, would be page five, Madam Superintendent? Page four.
Page four, Your Honor. Would you like me to take you through the cuts on this particular page?
Oh, yes, okay, the bottom of page four. Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. So there's the elimination of one paraprofessional at the Lincoln School. Would it be okay just to do the totals at the bottom? Okay, thank you. A total of 19 FTEs for the amount of $372,590. The, the next grouping is a total of one FTE for the amount of $46,421. The next grouping of math resource teachers for the amount of two FTEs for the amount of $92,842. amount of two FTEs for the amount of $92,842. And the next grouping of science teacher positions for the amount of two FTEs, $92,842. And the last one, too. For 13 teachers at Lowell High, $603,473 teaching positions. For a total on this page, page six, Your Honor, $48,46,112.
Correct. Thank you. I'm sure we'll have, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry. The total number of positions eliminated?
Total number, 19 FTEs, 1, 20, 22, 24.
38.
38.
38?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you, the Superintendent again. The day-to-day substitute account, we're not going to, we won't realize any savings in that with these early release days?
Madam Superintendent?
We will come to that under professional development. Presently, we spend just over $200,000 on substitutes for PD. And next week, we're planning on bringing that forward. We still have over a million-dollar gap on Monday evening. We have a subcommittee meeting that we intend to share with the committee, the work that's been done on those half-days, and ask at that time for a discussion to be had with regards to offering half-day professional developments as an offset to that particular line item. But that work will be done next week.
Mr. Leahy's purpose, this particular account is only for sicknesses. This isn't for professional development coverage at all. So this is the account only when people are out-
It's in a different section.
... day-to-day sickness. This has nothing to do with professional development.
Okay. One of my colleagues had brought up a question about allocating money to the schools, budgeting this. Would be able to save any money that way?
No, quite honestly, I did talk to your colleague. I can allocate the funds to a particular school, but these schools, again, at the K-8 level, have no flexibility in staff once they expend their allocated funds to cover at the school level. They don't have a school-based budget that's large enough to pay for subs. At the elementary level, we're taking out all of the allied arts, with the exception of the phys ed, art, and music. There's no play in the schedule to have, if a teacher's out sick, another teacher pick up a class. There's just nothing at the really K-8 level to do that. And at the high school, I know they already worked to coordinate the sub pool that they receive to cover the different sicknesses and whatnot. But I really fear that we get into a situation, whether it be halfway during the year, three quarters away during the year, if the schools expended their allocation, they're going to have no recourse and no real flexibility to maneuver their building staff to cover them.
How, just bear with me, two quick questions. I mean, over the last few years, we've been trying to work on this account, but it looks like we haven't made any progress. I mean, according to the numbers, I mean-
Yeah, no, and that's my concern. The fund, when I first came on board, I think was budgeted at about $1,003, $1,002. One year, we cut it by $100,000, and next year, we cut it by $100,000. We have worked to reduce that overall annual expenditure for the day-to-day subs, but for the last few years, we've been right over, right around the million-dollar mark. I think if you were to reduce that to even $900,000, the bottom line is next year, you're still going to come in at $1 million or $1 million in actual savings. And then we're going to be looking mid-year where to find that extra $100,000. We're working, you know, as hard as we can with the existing building staff and taking a look at sick use and abuse and whatnot. I do not know that it can be managed any better than this million-dollar-per-year expenditure. And really, just given the tightness of the budget, don't want to be in a predicament next year where a school has no flexibility or latitude to shift staff to cover if someone's out sick.
And this covers the high school as well, too?
This is K-8, I mean, K-12. This is the entire district.
All right. Is this up to industry standard for a school district this size?
You can jump on that one.
I do recall last year that Assistant Superintendent Personnel Mulligan brought a report forward, had done a full analysis on this particular issue. And at the time, it was the fact that, yes, we were doing a good job of tracking and that there had been a decrease over time. And again, just so that people are just reminded, we do have contractual issues here, so people can't go outside of the contract without penalties. So we have so many days allotted for sick time. If you go over that time, you can go to a bank, but that's again by vote, so it's not an automatic. So there are safeguards in place, but to Mr. Lang's concern, for us to, you know, when we know this is what we basically trend, and that, again, contractually, we are responsible for this, I just would feel that it wouldn't be responsible for us to fund it much lower than it presently is, just because the rest of the budget is so tight.
Mr. Leary, then Mr. Conway?
Just to, you know, one thing that we did, I'm the one talking about, we should set budgets for every school. We don't need to do this tonight, but every school should have an allocation based on the $1 million that we're budgeting. And if someone starts to go over it, then at least the principals can begin to start to try to manage that endeavor. One thing, any type of industry, when you're managing something, you give them a budget, and you try to find out why you're exceeding that budget. Flu outbreak, well, obviously there's a reason for it. If you have, one of the things we used to do, I talked to the headmaster about, we replaced some of our headmasters when they call in sick. Maybe we don't do that. I don't know what the contractual languages are, but that's stuff we need to start taking a look at. Even if we don't do that stuff next year, it'd be nice to get an allocation addressed. High school, obviously, we get the biggest because it's the biggest building, the most employees, down to the elementary schools. Get an actual budget sent to the principal so they're aware of what their budget is. And you can hold them accountable to how much sick time is being used. There's always issues that can come up. Flu outbreak, you're not going to do anything about it. But that's something, at least we can begin the process. I agree, we can't shave off a million, especially when we're paying $1,470,000. You can't do it. But we need to get a direct involvement by management who has the only group of folks who can have any control over that. And I think, you know, again, we don't need to do it tonight, but in July, when we set this million-dollar budget in place, each school should have some type of an allocation that's based on the total population of teachers, and then a system of managing that in a way that we come within the million or less. Or at least, again, at least we have a cognizant understanding that School A had an issue this year with an outbreak of food poisoning or something. That way, you can say, okay, there's an anomaly, we agree with it. But the point is, we need to set budgets for these schools for $1 million of sick leave. Every other industry would do that. I think we need to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Superintendent. How many teachers in this budget right now, how many teachers are you recommending to lay off or eliminate their positions? What's the total on the three levels?
You're talking beyond the section we're at now, because the section we're at now, we have-
Total.
Total.
Mr. Lang can go through and calculate that for you by grade level.
Thank you. That's in total on the three levels, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
And Unit B in total?
Madam Superintendent?
I would just like to remind the committee that by employee group, however, even though we are laying off or propose laying off more teachers than administrators, given the amount of teachers we have, to their total whole, it's only 2.7% of all of our teachers, where administrators, it's 12.8%, which is obviously significant and higher. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. In terms of the long-term substitutes, and this would, I'm sure, require some tea-leaf reading, but do we have any concerns regarding how, we're going to have, over the last couple of years, we've had significant layoffs. We've lost a lot of teachers. Do we have any concerns about the kind of aging population that's teaching in our schools and a higher need for long-term substitutes? And I don't know if it's something we can anticipate at this point, but it's just something, as I'm looking at this number, I mean, we saw a reduction last year, I mean, $50,000 between, you know, '09 and FY10. I wouldn't want to bank that, because I think that it's a very fluid number, but I don't know if the changes in population are being reflected in this actual usage of the long-term substitutes. And if it's something, I mean, again, I know I'm kind of asking you to see into the future, so if you have that capacity, I'd appreciate it. But maybe come up with a way that we might be able to track that?
Yeah, it's very difficult, because the way we use the long-term sub-account, those would be positions that, and to be honest with you, I was surprised it was trending down this year. We've had a number of maternity leaves that I didn't anticipate, where people that will, say, take a maternity leave, but then just leave their position open for a year so that they're not getting paid. It's a volatile account. It's an account that we use. This wouldn't cover, like, your day-to-day sicknesses, even your long-term sicknesses. You'd have to have someone, and I think we might use, like, say, 30 school days or something like that. So unless you've actually been out consecutively for that many days, and we've put a sub in, those people would just be charged to the day-to-day sub-account. So that's why the day-to-day sub-account, I really wouldn't want to make a cut-in, because I think that's where you're going to see that account, if anything, start to go up. Your long-term sub-account is, when we have a situation in the local budget where a teacher A is actually budgeted and receiving a salary, but for whatever reason, it could be a worker's comp issue if someone's injured, it could be a situation of a maternity leave, something like that, and you're paying a second person, that second person's salary gets charged to the long-term sub-account line. But again, it's just, it's very difficult. We don't always know when people are doing the maternity leaves, as well as, again, you get into your worker's comp issues. And that $1 million covers us not only for teachers, but for all staff. So that's, you know, your teachers, administrators, if someone's out for a long-term leave and needs to be replaced, paras, you know, right down the line.
Madam Superintendent?
And as I just mentioned to Assistant Superintendent Lang, trending downward could have something to do with the fact that, the committee may recall that we have been working with our legal department on workman's comp issues, getting people back to work, concerted effort to do that, and to come up with alternative duties that people can do for us. So a concerted effort has been done by the personnel and legal department on that issue.
Ms. Martin?
Recognizing that as a kind of ongoing effort, would there be any comfort level in shaving anything off that? I mean, if we were looking at a $50,000 differential between last year and this, would we be comfortable, I mean, and again, I'm asking the question, I'm not making a judgment. I'm asking for your opinion. You've tracked these numbers far more closely than I have. Would we be comfortable doing that, or is it maybe even something at the midpoint of the year we want to do?
To be quite honest with you, I was just going to refer to Superintendent, I really would not recommend reducing anything at this point. The other issue, and again, just knowing long-term, we'll be having these discussions mid-year around all of the ARIF fund positions that are going to be coming off grants. If we are trending again, when we do the second quarter report in December of next year, that we are going to trend to savings as well, and we've locked in on, say, at that point, any, you know, maternity leaves or no leaves of absence, possibly, excuse me, possibly do something at that point, or even, as I'm preparing the budget for the following year, take that into consideration to possibly pick up some of the ARIF positions that, like, our sped positions we talked about, that we know we're going to have to build into the local funding for the 11 budget. But I know it's a $50,000 savings, but I'd really be hesitant to put ourselves in the short right now.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Just one final question, and this is really more about as we move forward. The capacity for, I mean, I think it's, and I know we all feel this way, I mean, you look at these types of numbers of teacher positions, parapositions being eliminated, and we all recognize how devastating that is to our district from top to bottom. There's no question that these cuts will be felt in a profound way throughout our district, not even just in those specific classrooms. So no one looks at these numbers in any way and thinks that this is an easy choice to make. But as we recognize that there are going to be, you know, a significant number of people who are going to be, who are going to be eliminated as part of this, do we make an effort in terms of bringing these people in as, to absorb these substitute needs, when we have, you know, kind of qualified, trained people? Do we make an effort to make that happen?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? What's the, what's your, the committee, again, 2300, Regular Education Instruction Classroom. Move approval by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leahy. Question, Mr. Leahy?
No, second.
Okay, second. Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
On to page seven, again, in Section 2300, Regular Education Instruction Specialists. The bottom line number is $8,735,006. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two music positions for the amount of $92,842, as well as a total of 10.5 Instructional Technology Specialists, as well for the amount of $487,331, and one instructional specialist position for the amount of $76,803, the amount of one FTE at Lowell High.
Thank you. Mr. Conway? Move to approve by Mr. Conway, here's a second. Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page eight, again, 2300, Regular Education Instruction Classroom. These are non-personnel expenses, and the dollar amount is $2,325,870. What's the wish of the committee? Move to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Conway. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page nine, A, again, 2300, Other Instructional Programs Personnel. We're looking at a bottom line number of $560,799. Question by Ms. Dougherty.
I'm sorry. Through you to the Superintendent. Could you explain to us the absentee program that we're eliminating for $65,000 at the high school?
Yes, this pays for overtime for clerical staff, as well as for police officers to go to the homes of students who have not reported to school. Our recommendation would be that this work be done during the school day.
If I could follow-
Yes.
Does that mean that program has completely eliminated them? Because I know originally it was funded with Shannon Grant money as well. Has that completely dried up, so we don't have this program at all? Because as you know, it's difficult to get parents home during the day. That's how we ended up with the evening and the, you know, the visits and that. So is this done completely now without this funding, or do we still have Shannon Grant money in it?
It's my understanding, and I'll let Assistant Superintendent Lang clarify, but the Shannon Grant monies haven't been totally allocated this year yet, so.
We're hoping to still receive some Shannon Grant funds next year. Our allocation was significantly reduced for the current year, and I really don't know what's going to happen with the next year. This, it would be, for right now, eliminating the program, unless there were funds identified at a later time. But I don't want to have you thinking that we're going to be able to come up with those funds. This would be to outright eliminate the program.
But we don't know about that grant yet.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty.
Just one more question on this. Do we have any data that tracks if this has been successful? If students who are, you know, who, the police go out and visit their families, who, you know, do they actually improve their attendance? Do we have any data on that?
We can get the data from the high school on that particular matter.
Mr. Leary, then Mr. Conway?
Just to answer Ms. Dougherty's question, these guys did a great job of reducing our overall absentee program in the freshman academy alone. One of the biggest projects that they did is they went out and visited all the eighth graders that had issues with attendance. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to support cutting it, because we, again, have a lot of millions of dollars to cut. But, you know, I want to, they did a great job, and it was a large impact. So when you have freshman academy reduction, one of the components, and not the only one, was their efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Conway? Mr. Conway?
Just very quickly, I agree with my colleague that that was a, it's something that's very effective, and I think that's going to be sadly missed. If we do get Shannon Grant money, is it automatically earmarked for that program, or can it be earmarked for that program?
Mr. Lang, or Madam Superintendent?
It's my understanding that the police department will work with Lowell High and the school department to determine the best need for that money.
Just a point of clarification, actually, the bottom line is on page nine B, and it's $570,799.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Leahy. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. On page 10, Special Education Instruction. Total bottom line is $18,144,632. Ms. Dougherty.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, after a second, second by Mr. Conway. Any discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 11, Special Education Instruction Non-Personnel. Total non-personnel number is $6,640,300. Ms. Dougherty.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, after a second.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Leary. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 12, Adult Education Personnel. Bottom line is $443,263. Mr. Conway?
Approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Conway, after a second. Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll, Ms. Dougherty.
I'm sorry, I just have a question. Is the director position, is that a contract position, or is that a Unit B position? It's Unit B. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 13, Library Personnel. Total personnel is $546,308. What's the wish of the committee? Mrs. Hearn?
Thank you. My name is Jody O'Hearn. I live at 23 Holyrood Avenue in Lowell. I am currently one of the library media specialists at Lowell High School, and I want to speak to you tonight about the positions that you're going to propose to cut. I just want to read some of a study that Simmons College did. The following bullets I'd just like to read that, these are the highlights from around the country that investigated the impact of school library media programs on student achievement. At each grade level, school library programs improve MCAS scores. At each grade level, student use of the library produces higher mean MCAS scores. At each grade level, hours open make a difference in the MCAS scores. At the elementary and middle junior high school levels, average MCAS scores are higher in schools with larger per pupil expenditures for the school library media materials. At the elementary and high school levels, students who are served by a full-time school librarian, certified librarian, have higher MCAS scores than those in schools without a full-time librarian. At the elementary level, students score higher on the MCAS test when the library is aligned with the state curriculum frameworks. And at the high school level, schools with automated collections have higher MCAS scores. It's also been found in the state of Colorado that state scores tests average 18% higher in middle schools with well-developed library media programs. And in Alaska, Colorado, Pennsylvania, and Massachusetts, the scores on the MCAS test improve by 10 to 15 points in schools with strong library programs and certified library media specialists. I urge you tonight to not cut the librarians, and I would like to just make a note that of the 15 Unit B positions that are being cut, which we call administrative positions, 14 of those are the library media specialists. Also, the Mass School Library Association standards dictate that the high school has one full-time librarian per 500 to 800 students. How will the accreditation of Lowell High School be possible if we have none of, or have no library media specialist at the high school? I want to make it clear that the librarians do not just check out the books, as we have been told. Some of the things that we do, and it takes a certified library media specialist to do so, we instruct students, we work closely with the teachers, we teach all the freshmen at Lowell High School how to use all the databases that we have, which, if we don't have a librarian, we will no longer get the thousands and thousands of dollars of infotrac databases or databases that our students use each day. And if some of the students were here, we'd tell you that they are still using in college today. We also teach them how to use the Internet, how to read books, what books to read, and become lifelong learners. And we also order all the materials that align with the curriculum. I would like to ask this committee how they feel that a library aides will be able to take on these jobs of the 14 library media specialists that you plan on cutting tonight. I would like to leave with one quote that Harold Howe, a former U.S. Commissioner of Education, said, "What a school thinks about its library is a measure of what it thinks about education." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Downey. I am the library media specialist at the James Sullivan Middle School. I lied to a group of students last week. You see, at this time of the year, I gather my books and my projects, and I head down to the Riley School. There I share with the upcoming fifth-grade students what is expected of them for their summer reading, reading three books and completing two projects, bringing books to book talk and projects to show so they know exactly what to do. So at the end, between the high-fiving and we'll see you next year, Mrs. Downey, I just couldn't explain about budget cuts and business decisions, so I just said, "See you next year." Business decisions are made on a daily basis, in households, in businesses large and small, in government, nationally, statewide, and locally. Some decisions have a more profound effect than others, and I know the ones affecting our school budget were difficult to make. But I also know this. Library media centers are more than a repository for books. Libraries and the librarians that oversee them are indispensable in building a foundation of skills that will not only be needed for higher education, but which will serve students throughout their lives. More importantly, libraries and librarians instill a lifelong passion for reading. Through this passion, children develop a sense of wonderment about who they are, their world, and their role in it. The decision to cut all library media specialists across the district will have a profound effect on every student from K to 12, and will be truly a loss for the children of Lowell, and I'm asking you to rethink this decision. Thank you.
Anyone else? What's the wish of the committee? Again, on page 13, the bottom-line number is $546,308. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate hearing from people who are doing this job all day, every day. And I have to say, this committee, you know, the people in this room recognize that the role of librarian is a very different thing than it was even 10 years ago. So it's not a matter of us having this kind of antiquated notion of what a librarian is. We recognize it, and we know how this eviscerates programming that we have had in place and have been doing our best to build over the last decade. You know, again, we all come at this from different perspectives. This is something that, you know, as an English major, as someone who's, you know, kind of has huge respect for libraries, and they do serve as these amazing repositories throughout our lives of information and resources. I do find this incredibly distasteful, to even be considering this kind of a cut across the district. It's chilling to think that we've come to this point. But as I look at this, I have to keep in mind that the only places we can go to solve this problem are twofold. One was to go to the city. I feel very comfortable in saying that the changes that have happened in the last 24 hours have made a profound difference in what our budget reality looks like. The movement that has come from the city, their investment in education, I think, is certainly welcome, and I am quite simply really thrilled that we got that kind of response from our city council. That leaves only one other place to solve this problem, and that is working with our unions to find concessions, whether it's with the teachers' union, or as we talk in this place with Unit B, the administrators' union. I, you know, again, this cut has already been made. We move forward having already made it. But the only way we're going to be able to rescue any of these things is going to have to come from our ability to work with our partners to find the funding to make this up. Because there's, as devastating as this cut is, it's, there are no other less devastating cuts to be considered. So I will make a motion to approve page 13 with this final line item, budget total of $546,308. And all I can say, though I know it's not much comfort, is that I do it with a heavy heart, because I think this is one of those moves that we make that really destroys something really valuable within our district.
Is it a second? Second by Mr. Leahy. I want to recognize Ms. Lariba.
And then talk.
No, she had already answered.
And then talk.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The thought of having a library without a librarian is absolutely incredible. And yes, it's unfortunate that this is something we're considering, but I think we need to remember the population we have here in Lowell, and the fact that we have many low-income children that don't have the ability or the transportation to get to the public library. Our librarians are with these students day in and day out, encouraging them and nurturing them with book choices, helping them choose books because they're not, that's not something that they're used to doing. And we all know that the children who read do better in life, better in school. And I think this is one of those cuts that we would be hard-pressed to recover from, so I cannot support that.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy, then Mr. Leary, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you. You know, this is one of those difficult decisions. And, you know, as everybody knows, I have personally three kids in the school, and I was very angry when I heard about this. But again, you know, when it comes down to the bottom line here, if we don't all pitch in on this shortfall, we're not going to solve any of these problems. And we have to come in here as adults and make decisions, and we can save some of these positions if we come together. As my colleagues know, that, you know, for just the news that we got today was much better than we left last week and even the weekend. So, you know, we have to make some of these decisions tonight. They absolutely do not have to be final decisions, and they shouldn't be. And the city of Lowell should not sit here and accept this cut. But tonight, we have to make it. But this is not the end of the road, and it doesn't have to be.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, then Mr. Conway.
I don't know how to say it any better than Mr. Leahy just said it. It's, when Mr. Hearn gets up, and, you know, your friend gets up and says, "Save libraries," it's almost like you're going back into the Stone Age when you're taking a look at library media specialist cuts. And not only that cut, but the regular technical computer folks, K through eight, we don't have any. That's a major issue. So we need to come together with the Unit B folks. We need to sit down and see if there's a way we can look at this program going forward next year. But right now, just simply to vote no on this cut without providing significant alternatives, I don't know what you can do. So I am going to support this cut at this point, being fully aware that, yeah, and not only the accreditation at the high school, but K through eight is significant. I mean, going, you're having library aides who will work efficiently, I'm sure, but you're looking at a high technical skill of folks that are managing your media, and that's something, if we lose completely, we're in big, big trouble. So I think it's something we need to take a look at again in the next week, once we have discussed this with our unions. Again, Mr. Leahy said it much better than I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Throw you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent. What will this do exactly to our accreditation?
In conversation with the headmaster and with Dr. Jack, because I too, obviously, was concerned about what this cut would do. And it is my understanding, through the conversation with them, that it will ultimately impact our certification down the road. If you'd like, you know, the timeline of that, we can definitely ask Mr. Smerus or Dr. Jack, perhaps, to speak more to that point. But I also would, you know, mention to the committee that certification at all of our levels in our various programs, as we go through these very difficult cuts, are going to be impacted. The fact that, as Mr. Leary just said, K8 with regards to technology basically is nonexistent with this budget level that we presently have. Libraries are being impacted throughout the entire system. Again, I'm not sitting here and telling you that this is a cut, that's a good cut, or it's a cut that anybody wants to make. It's just that after working four months with our staff, asking, you know, which is the least amount of damage and the least amount of pain at this time, in the context, again, of FY12, which is going to be another very difficult year for us, there are no good solutions here. We are just trying to, again, listen to our administrators and go with the recommendations system-wide that we think we will be able to keep a core, the classroom teacher, music, art, and phys ed in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What's the wish of the committee? Make a motion to approve? Second by, second by Mr. Leahy. Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, it passes.
Page 14, Audio-Visual Instruction. The total bottom-line number is $239,099. What's the wish of the committee? Mr. Leahy, move approval?
Move, yeah.
Move approval. You have a second? Second by Ms. Dougherty. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 15, 2350 Professional Development. Total bottom-line number is $864,140. Eight sixty-four, one forty. Mr. Leahy?
Question?
Yes. Question?
Throw you to the superintendent. Are these all under contract obligations?
No.
This whole page? No?
No. The professional development that I referred to earlier this evening for the amount of $237,940, we will have that discussion with the committee. We do take, you know, there are some costs in there for substitutes, as well as other PD costs that we're hoping to-
Not to interrupt, but, I mean, there's $864,000 on this page. Is this something that we could do without? I mean-
Some of it is-
Tuition reimbursement.
Right, that's contract-based.
PD, mentor stipends. I mean, his library, I mean, you know, I'm not, this could go to something else in the budget.
Right. You do have mentor stipends in your contract. You do have- You do have mentor stipends in your contract, you do have lead specialist stipends in your contract as well. All of the stipends and as well as the Teacher Academy are all covered off in your teacher's contract. So those are all provisions.
What would happen if we cut it?
I'm sorry?
What would happen if we cut it, basically? You go to mediation or whatever?
Right, that we wouldn't be able to honor the contract in all of those particular areas.
And how much, I mean, what's our liability for that? I mean, you know, this is the things right here that could save some money. And this is the stuff that drives me personally crazy. And what's our liability if we didn't fund it?
Mr. Lang, do you have any suggestions on what that liability cost would be?
A few points. On this particular page, yes, the second line item for PD is the, really, in my view, the one line that's in play. The one line that you're not contractually obligated to afford. I think the superintendent and deputy superintendent will be talking about where that money gets spent next evening at a curriculum subcommittee meeting and have the conversation about, some of it is for day-to-day subs, for professional development, some covers certain individuals or companies that we contract with to provide PD. That you'll have a discussion with Monday night and then I'm anticipating a recommendation for Wednesday night, if we meet again on Wednesday night, for the budget here to be taken into consideration. I mean, your exposure, quite honestly, in a particular fiscal year would be the dollar amount that you didn't fund. You're contractually obligated to provide cost reimbursement. If you didn't provide cost reimbursement, then every individual who submitted cost reimbursements, up to that $300,000, if that's your trend, you'd be on the hook for. The Teacher Academy, again, you're, it's in the contract that you provide a Teacher Academy, and I'm not even getting into the merits right now of the Teacher Academy, but you're looking at annual exposure of just not providing those programming, which do benefit, and again, I'm not going to get into...
Just an observation that here's a page that doesn't cut salaries, but it's extras.
Mr. Conway, everybody wants to speak, and there's so many to go down the line. Mr. Conway, then Ms. Lariva, then Mr. Larry, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree with my colleague. Professional development, let me just clarify this. We could eliminate the $237,940, is that correct?
We're looking at the recommendation. I don't know at this point in time if it's up to the $237, but the majority of that line item, yes.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is, let me, let me see if I can get this clear. Do we have obligations with this professional development? Do we absolutely have to pay someone?
It's my understanding that all the line items on this page, except for that line item of $237,940, are contractual.
Because, again, I mean, you could take the $237,000, I mean, I for one, we just, we just ended up cutting libraries and library aides and, you know, I'd rather have this $237 instead of professional development, put it into the libraries, because what's more basic than libraries?
Again, a recommendation was coming forward to the committee, not only to address the $237,000, but a solution on how we could still provide PD with the half-day model to offset that particular lineup. But we wanted to have a full discussion with the committee at the subcommittee.
But I know that, but the, but the bottom line here is that we vote on that, you know, this is just like what we talked about last week. We vote on something and then all of a sudden, we can't go back to it. I mean, why not, why not take a look at this right now, like my colleague just mentioned?
Madam Superintendent?
Just a clarification. We are going back to it. And last week, when we said about the subcommittee that was coming up, we just think that it's a significant change in operationally how we deliver professional development in the district. The intent is for this administration to bring forward, you know, a budget next week that will trade off, if that's the wish of the committee, that $230,000 for the half-day releases so that we can still offer PD to our teachers, but at that reduced cost. But all the other line items are contractual-based.
Ms. Lariva?
So, the $237 really is contingent on us accepting the half-day release days for K through eight.
No, you can remove the $237 tonight if it's the wish of the committee. It's just that we would like to bring together, you know, the thoughtful proposal to connect it to a solution, because that is a lot of PD, and to leave our district without that professional development, we think would...
Because barring that approval, removing this would leave us with no professional development at all.
No, we still would have some professional development, but that is a significant amount of the development, professional development.
And then, and perhaps this is a question for Mr. Lang. In looking at the '09-10 budget and then the '09-10 projected, we have some really big swings in amounts. And I'm just wondering if you could clarify that for me, because then when you go back to your recommended, you're still going back to that budget number. So I'm just trying to understand that process.
Sure. Good question. There was a grant that the Teacher Academy received for the current year that the grant would not pay for, we didn't know this ahead of time, but the grant would not pay for the teacher's stipends, but it would pay, I'm sorry, it wouldn't pay for the bonus, teacher bonus, but it would pay for the stipends for the people who teach the courses, the instructor course stipends, and some of the mentor stipends. So internally, you'll see we're still actually coming in and projecting a little bit under budget, but we had to for this one year because we got a grant that would offset the other costs, do internal maneuvering to pay the bonus payments out of our local budget and then offset with the grant all of the other charges. That grant will not be in effect for next year, so we're going back to just level, not level funding, but prior-year appropriation funding, as well as, I haven't built in any increase. You can see I just level-funded the '09-10 budget to '10-11, just given the number of new teachers that we actually have enrolled in the program. We should be able to live within that line item.
Mr. Larry?
Thank you. Just, we're having a meeting on Monday to discuss the professional development and really the half-day program. What I, what I like to do at this point is make a motion to take the tuition reimbursement account and the professional development account, which is a total of $537,940, and put it into a suspense account at this point in time until after that discussion.
Suspension of the rules before he makes a motion. Suspension of the rules?
Make a motion and a budget line item. Okay, I make a suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Larry, second by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion by Mr. Larry to take the $537,940, which comes from the tuition reimbursement and the professional development, and put it in the suspense account. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Conway.
Just quickly, what that does is after Monday's meeting, we can have an, to get this line item put aside, I know there's librarian, media specialists, and other issues. We're going to have to spend something on professional development, the tuition reimbursement, maybe we can do it a year later, maybe not. We can bring that up at that subcommittee discussion. It's not a bad thing to look at, it doesn't make any decisions tonight, but it gives us some breathing room.
Further discussion in the motion? Ms. Lariva?
I'm sorry, but aren't those payments contractual payments? Yes, that's correct.
The $300,000 is, yes.
So, I'm just not clear how we can pull that out of the mix. If somebody could just explain that for me.
Correct. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, as Ms. Martin said. That'd be the, but I mean, we would have to have a negotiated conversation.
Move approval?
To negotiate that.
Ms. Martin, okay?
Thank you.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Ms. Martin?
Yes, I would second it, and could I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Conway already seconded it.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Do we have any potential, as I look at, because there are two different things, and I'm looking at the page as a whole, I don't have in front of me the grants and that whole section. I know that we have it, but we haven't really kind of gone over it during this process yet.
In the best, but that's okay.
Then I'll take a look at it. I mean, mine seems to end with the, with the staff salary. Is that all grants? This whole section is just all grants?
No, when you look in the staff salary book, pages one through 49 are the local budget staff salary, and then there's a purple insert.
Okay, thank you.
And then the grant folks come in.
But we haven't gone over that.
Yeah, those are just the grant, the employees, the full-time equivalents being charged to the various grants. Within the grants, there are some line items for professional development things. I had mentioned, I think, the last time, we're really just not going to have a good handle on those dollar amounts until, unfortunately, it could be late June, early July. We still just don't have firm numbers on our, on our grants. But those would be conversations I'd anticipate having over the summer.
Okay. My only other question would be, as we look at kind of basically level funding this, the Teacher Academy efforts and the stipends and all that, I mean, my sense would be that we do not have as many people going through that Teacher Academy at this point. The number of new teachers coming in into our district has slowed to a, less than a trickle.
Correct.
Is that reflected? I mean, there's no reduction in the number of, you know, stipends or even the bonus payments all seem the same. We're not anticipating that that would go down at all with the...
No, I think it will go down in fiscal year '12.
Next year.
People are in the program for three years. So we're still kind of seeing the first wave, we'll have the last year, next year. So if we don't do any, which we won't, significant hiring for next year, I would see an offset in fiscal '12. But this is the third year, I mean, fiscal '11 will be the third year, so I don't project a shortfall at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Since this is a contractual issue, I may have to vote present. Row call.
Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Present.
Present, okay. Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Present.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Four yeas, one nay, two present, passes.
Mayor, if I can, the remaining line item would be $326,200. I make a motion to approve the remaining line item.
Motion by Mr. Larry to approve the remaining line item, second by Mr. Conway. Any further discussion? Row call.
Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Page 16, 2450, instructional technology. The bottom-line number is $385,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway.
Just a quick question. How do we go from $110,000 to $150,000?
Mr. Lang?
Through you, to Mr. Lang.
I'm sorry, which, this is on page 16?
On the, on page 16, computer contracted services, the instructional, we went from, in '09 to '09-10, we went $110,000, and then on '10-11, we had, we're going up to $150,000.
That's my recommendation, just given the fact that we're actually going to have less computer people in the district, actually, to do troubleshooting in schools and things like that. The, the real job of the instructional technology specialists in the schools is instruction. But quite often, they do help schools, classrooms, offices, if something goes wrong with the technology in the building, troubleshoot. And we, for a few years, have had a contract with a vendor to come in and do PC repair and whatnot. So I'm just recommending that we put a little extra money aside, particularly where we're going to be down bodies in schools, to, to help offset that, just so schools don't feel a real significant time lag between an issue happening and someone getting out to help them.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. We already did that, you're right.
Yeah, I was already seconded.
Any other questions? Row call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
On page 17, we have guidance counselors, social workers, and psychologists. We have both personnel and non-personnel. The bottom-line number is $3,756,514. What's the wish of the committee? Any questions?
Move approval?
Move approval by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Row call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Are you here for the next page?
I'd like to comment on kind of everything that's been talked about to date.
Okay.
And possibly it spills over to these other things as well.
Okay. Chair recognizes Mrs. Gallagher.
Okay, I'm Sharon Hardy Gallagher, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a very, very concerned taxpayer, because my children have already graduated from the Lowell Public Schools, and they'll proudly tell you that they're the fifth generation of our family to do so. And I've been teaching at UMass Lowell and at Merrimack College, freshmen in particular, for the past six years. So I see a lot of freshmen from all sorts of communities with various levels of preparation from their high schools. And Lowell High School has always been able to, to hold its own against the other communities. But the cuts I'm seeing tonight are very distressing. My son's teachers will tell you that I've always been involved in their schools and volunteering and doing what I can to make sure the teachers are respected and treated professionally and have a professional workplace to work in. But little did I know that when my oldest son, Glenn, was, when he graduated from Lowell High in 2005, that that would be probably the last year of a full, well-rounded education in our Lowell Public Schools. Because he was able to take tech, technical education and family and consumer science when he was in middle school, where they were able to reinforce the lessons of math and science and reading, as well as giving the kids some life skills in cooking and hammering a nail and some of those other special things that kids, that everybody needs to use. He had writing as a daily subject in middle school, and he said in, in high school that that made a big difference in how well he could perform in high school, let alone in college. And, but those were gone before my younger son, Brian, went through just four years later. Now, Brian was one of the last students to take the UMass Lowell statistics class that was broadcast to the high school, so that, I think, there might have been 40 students. And I know we ran two sections of that class for Lowell High School students. So it was well-subscribed, but the budget cuts last year eliminated that program. So I'm seeing more and more things disappear from our students' education. My student, my children took, and I took advantage of the library-media specialists, and I always had conferences with Kathy Downey about what book can my kid read that will actually keep them engaged for, for the content of the book, to reinforce that love of reading. I had many discussions with guidance counselors and clerk schedulers on how to fill the gap in my child's schedule that arrived in September, or how to get the college transcripts done, or getting that college recommendation done in time for the early admission school that was being applied to. I know this past year, the custodians worked very hard to scrub the high school down because of the concerns about the, the different kinds of flus that were going around and other germs that were proliferating. My kids were active in school clubs and school sports and really gained a lot from doing that, both in terms of time management skills, as well as having things to show on their college application, that they did things other than just show up for class. And, so, again, I see these cuts, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here because you've all said it in prior meetings and tonight, how much these things hurt. And the, as Ms. Martin said earlier, the only two places left are the unions and the city. And we know what's happening in the city budget. We know that a lot of cuts have been made on that side as well. But, so what disturbs me most is I still haven't heard what the UTL leadership is doing to help with this crisis. help with this crisis. You know, the other night, I watched the broadcast, and I heard Mr. George say, "Oh, sure, we'll help," and when I sat here last year, I heard him make the same promise, and again, I'm waiting to see what's coming of that. I've heard the principals and the administrators cancel their raises, I've heard of many city unions taking furlough days and passing up their raises, but again, where is the UTL leadership? They're hanging on to an antiquated medical plan, and I know that's been bandied about a lot, but as a state employee and a former corporate employee, I've seen my medical plans change and my co-pays change and my deductibles change, and I didn't have a voice in it, but it kept my job, and that was more important to me. I, I see the sick leave buyback, and I just don't understand how we can justify that, especially where all of the area communities have caps on their sick leave buyback programs. I, I look at the coaches' stipends, and I hear that they're well above the community standards for coaches in our areas, and I wonder why, rather than cutting our coaches, maybe they could cut their stipends instead and, and save some jobs that way. So it's very frustrating to me to just hear promises and not see any action, not hear any concrete suggestions. The stall tactics worked last year, but here we are again, and things are just terrible. We're not just, I talked to a city counselor tonight, and he implied something like, "Well, there are still fluffy programs to cut," and I just said to him, "I've had kids in the school system, I've, there is no fluffy program left here, everything is cutting to the bone." And, and you can pick the metaphor you want to use, everybody's going to share the pain, everybody's going to have skin in the game, you've got to give a pound of flesh, this is the time when we're all having to sacrifice. We'd rather save the, as many programs, as many people as we can, and it would seem to me that it would be better to take a few furlough days or to pass up a raise than to have thirty kids in a classroom. I brought two books along with me, because these are books that are well-known in the corporate sector, they've been on the New York Times Bestseller List for probably over ten years, Who Moved My Cheese and Our Iceberg Is Melting, they both basically tell the same story about how the world is changing, and what, like it or not, we have to change with the world, and we can sit down and cry all we want about what we've lost, but that's not going to get us anywhere, we've got to make some changes. The automobile company unions have learned this lesson a little too late for that industry, and I hate to see any more of these, these changes lose, changes, losses in our school system happening, because it's our kids that have lost, lost fifty pounds of flesh in this process. Thank you.
I believe we're up to page eighteen. Thirty-one hundred, parent information and student support. Do we, did we, I apologize, did we vote on guidance counselors, social workers, and psychologists?
We did page eighteen.
No.
Yes, Sean.
No, I'm sorry.
Page eighteen.
Again, that number is three million seven fifty-six five fourteen in total, that's page seventeen.
No, we did seventeen, wait a minute.
We did seventeen?
We did seventeen, your honor.
Okay.
We're on page eighteen.
Okay, page eighteen, I apologize. Parent information and student support, the total number is four hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and three dollars. Mr. Conway?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leahy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Page nineteen, transportation, the total is five million three hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Mr. Lang.
I actually realized a few minutes ago, I made a small error on this page. The bus monitors that are listed at three hundred and forty-two thousand on the personnel side, this is the first year that we actually rolled those costs into our special ed transportation contract, so we pick up those monitors through our contract, so I just, for the budget purposes, would like to move that three forty-two down to, zero it out in the personnel line, and move the three forty-two to increase the contracted transportation for special ed from two-five to two million eight forty-two. Same bottom line budget, but it just reflects that that money is actually being spent through a contract, as opposed to these, these individuals being our employees.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Conway, to move the three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars from bus monitors down to contracted transportation, special education, increasing that line item from two million five hundred thousand to two million eight hundred and forty-two thousand. Motion to make that move, do we need a roll call on that, or could you, just the bottom line?
Yeah, I'd have a roll call on that.
Roll call on that. Roll call.
Ms. Lariba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
Yes.
I apologize on, Ms. Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Bottom line number then would be five million three hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for transportation. Move by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leahy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
On page twenty, athletics and student activities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we're going to need a motion to extend.
Oh, yes. Motion by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leary, to go beyond the ten o'clock timeframe. All those in favor of going beyond ten o'clock signify by saying aye. Opposed, vote, thank you, thank you, Mr. Conway. Page twenty, athletics and student activities, the total for personnel and non-personnel is seven hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Yes.
Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, dear members of the Lowell School Committee, Dr. Scott, please let me introduce myself, Christopher Zacharrett, 28 Barrisford Avenue. I am, or I guess was, the head coach of the Lowell High School Alpine Ski Racing Team. Thank you for hearing me on behalf of the young men and women of the ski team, our student athletes who were members of the team, as well as past members, coaches, and parents who are members of our community. Please, let me advocate on their behalf. I'm aware of the constraints both before you and our community, but please, let me state that the Lowell High School is unique in its support for urban Alpine Ski Racing Team. This is an important, this is important for several reasons, most of which it exposes the sport of Alpine skiing to our city kids who otherwise would not have an opportunity to experience this aspect of one of the traditional winter sports. A not insignificant number of Lowell High School student athletes who participated on the ski team would not have experienced this sport other than the simple fact that Lowell High has a ski team. For instance, this year alone, the team enjoyed five athletes who had never skied before, all of them raced. Additionally, as you may be aware, the Alpine Ski Team is one of thirty-one varsity and junior varsity sports programs at the high school, yet it is the only sport to be eliminated in its entirety in the budget proposal. This is troubling, as opposed to looking to reduce its budget footprint, of which I can make available a proposal to do so. Elimination of the ski program is not a matter of cost reduction for one or more years with the, I'm sorry, what it in effect will do is it will kill the program in its entirety for all time. Please let me explain that. Other, for other sports at the high school, it is my understanding that under MIAA rules, as long as a school is ready, willing, and able to field a team, then its parent league, typically the Merrimack Valley Conference for most all Lowell High School teams, must accept that school's participation in the league. I cannot stress enough that this is not true in the Alpine Skiing League. Our parent league, the Massachusetts Bay West Ski League, is limited to fourteen teams. There is no option to expand this league simply due to the fact of extremely limited numbers of fields of play, that is, available ski areas. We have one, it is Neshoba Valley. Currently, there is a waiting list to fill a spot when a team or a school leaves the league. Indeed, our spot will be filled, and Lowell High will be out. It's as simple as that. If I may state in closing, these are smart kids on this team. Lowell High School, the Alpine Boys and Girls Ski Team were both gold medal award academic excellence winners, and almost all of my juniors this year were inducted into the National Honor Society. As for the seniors, almost all of them were National Honor Society members. Thank you.
I am like a bad penny that keeps turning up, I'm sorry. Jody O'Hern, twenty-three Holyrood Avenue. As one of the people that started the ski team here, I've had five children that have been on the ski team, one of which that went on to Northeastern and skied on their ski team. I think it's really unfair that the ski team is the only sport that is cutting both JV and varsity. No other teams have had to give up their JV teams, their JV rank or whatever, at all. So I would urge, if there's any way that we can at least keep the varsity piece of the ski team, that, that would be important for all the children that are on the ski team right now, one of them which is my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Georges, president of UTL. Last week, when you were going through the clubs and so on, and cutting the clubs and a bunch of the intermurals at the middle school level, I had a discussion with a number of people about those cuts. Being a kid who grew up in the acre, I know what kept me out of trouble, and that was after-school activities and sports and so on. At that particular time, I started talking with some of the folks, student directors and so on, about what maybe could, what could be done, and at that point, I went to Bill Samaras with an idea, asking for approval from our board at the UTL to start a, some foundation money or seed money to start some fundraising, to reestablish or to help supplement some of the funding of after-school activities at the high school and middle schools. So at this point, I've got approval from the Board of the United Teachers of Lowell to come up with ten thousand dollars in seed money, and a, and the discussion I had with Bill, and he has been terrific and very gracious in sharing some ideas about how best to make that money grow, to try to take some of the burden and make sure, some of the burden off the, the budget obviously that we have, and make sure that some of these after-school programs, intermu, programs at the high school, excuse me, at the middle schools and a number of the clubs. Now, we've talked about trying to make some sanity about these, about these stipends that people get, including some of the coaching stipends. I don't think it's anybody's fault with that, it isn't as though any of us ever went to the table and said, "We think coaches should be paid this," or stipends, we just took advisories from people at the high school that would say, "You know, the Cambodian Club now has fifty people in it, so the stipends should increase," and we said, "Okay," we looked at each other, really not knowing that much about it. We can certainly get to the bottom of it, we know there's some cases where some of the stipends could be shared, and perhaps a person who's at a JV level might help out with the freshmen and try to reestablish some of those sports. I think we can get pretty creative just by looking at what the industry standards are, by looking at what other communities do, which we've never done. I don't think it's anybody's fault on the school committee's side or our side, it isn't the, the primary thing. What did happen in years past, though, I think, is that when we got percentage increases for the teachers and the parents, it was just added to the coaches because it was the easiest way to deal with it. So hopefully, I appreciate Bill's really willingness to help out with this as far as trying to, trying to get some reasonable money to reestablish these after-school programs. Maybe there's a future in it for you, Bill, I don't know, but it'll be extremely helpful, and the five, the ten thousand dollars from the UTL is just again trying to get the seed money so we can create something, maybe a golf tournament, something else that we can ask the community to help with. I didn't expect to have to speak, but I do want to speak on another issue, and that has to do with, there's been a lot of discussion about the health insurance and master medical and all of this stuff, and quite frankly, I think the teachers have taken it on the chin for not a good reason. If you do an analysis of the numbers, you will find that there are more city contracts for master medical than school department contracts. You would make it appear, it would appear in the newspaper and with a lot of discussion, that it's the UTL saying no and everybody else is saying yes. There are more city-side contracts for master medical than UTL, including teachers and paraprofessionals. Our participation as a school district is forty-six percent in master medical. Three years ago, it was a hundred percent. That was the only option for school, for school-side personnel. The first year, it decreased to sixty-nine percent. It decreased the next year to fifty-eight percent. It's at forty-six percent now. It will decrease again. We have, I have had discussions with the city manager on various occasions of segues that would make it more attractive for people to choose to go to a different plan, rather than being forced into a different plan, and I get no cooperation. There's been a lot of discussion, and I think what happens is some of my friends here and I have probably had disagreements over this, because I think there's not a clear understanding. People will move toward the alternative plans when they're educated and they're ready to do so, and all we've tried to do is create a segue where it's comfortable for them to do it. Try it for a short period of time, if you remember right, a few years ago, when we negotiated the settlement, we had to, an open enrollment midterm. That open enrollment made it easier for people to try some of the less expensive plans and see if it worked for them. But I happen to represent very smart people, so my opinion is not that I should tell them what they should be doing, and I don't think we should all be following the agenda of some individuals who think eliminating that option is the only option. I think there's people who really do benefit from the master medical plan. If, if getting there, if getting eighty percent participation in other plans isn't enough, what is it? Simply eliminating the whole thing? I'm saying, that's not reasonable. The criticism I heard a few minutes ago was about, "We didn't do anything at the bargaining table last year." I'm not sure that the person that made the criticism is aware of anything that we did at the bargaining table, because it's secret, and I'm not about to embarrass anybody or go in in that direction, but you don't know what we did or did not at the bargaining table.
Mr. Georges, don't make this personal.
Well, I think I was being attacked, if I remember right, a few minutes ago. I, I, I agree with you. The point is, there's a lot of conjecture about a lot of things here. Over the years, moving to the ma, the master medical to forty-six percent participation over three years has saved one heck of a lot of money. Going to a self-funded program back in nineteen ninety-three saved perhaps a hundred million dollars. That was all done with the union. What we look for is cooperation. I told you that once, do we honestly, I'm not sure if the city would have moved as much as it did to the point that it did, where we're sitting here now saying, "We still have challenges, but they're not as deep as they were yesterday," but I do know, taking a position that says we expect everybody to come to the table, we'll come to the table, it doesn't mean we want to come to an agreement, but we'll certainly make a good faith effort. I just want to say, at this point, I know there's a lot of needs in the school system. No one should ever challenge the commitment of a teacher to educate children. I will tell you that no one has, has more of a commitment to educate kids and the welfare of children than the parents, more than the parents, than the teachers themselves that sit in front of them. Don't ever challenge that, just because we happen to be aggressive at what we do, from taking a group of teachers who back in nineteen ninety-two were one of the worst paid in this state, to a position where at least you can look at your, look at your pay stub and say, "At least I'm being treated somewhat fairly," for a very difficult job. We'll see what happens over the next few days. I contacted your attorney today to say there's a couple of dates next week that our negotiator is available. I'm sure we will have informal discussions with the superintendent and her personnel about different ideas that we have, and perhaps we can close this gap and maybe do a little better, I have no idea. Let's see how it works out over the next few days. But I do want to let you know, I wanted to, I'd say to you how I appreciated Bill Samaras' commitment to do this, try to fill that gap. I think there's something good that can come out of this, and hopefully it'll benefit the kids who really do benefit from being off the streets and involved in other activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Georges. Ms. Lariba?
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Georges, if, if he could come back up to the podium.
Mind answering a question, Mr. Georges? Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
First, I'll say I look forward to sitting down at the negotiation table with you, but-
First dance, I guess, huh?
In, in regards to your conversation about the seed money with the ten thousand dollars and your conversations with Mr. Samaras, did you come up with any kind of projected amount that you were looking for, and what kind of timetable that might be, because I would, I imagine that it would be very difficult to take ten thousand dollars and, and blow it up to a substantial amount in a shortened amount of time. I'm, I'm of the opinion that this is a great start, don't get me wrong, this is a great start, but this is something that would really be fruitful down the road, I just, I just kind of wanted to clarify that, because- I just, I just kind of wanted to clarify that because I, again, appreciate the fact that, that, you know, you set up the seed money, but I'd like to make sure that there's conversation about long-term planning.
See, Bill has done a lot more of this than I have, and that's why I approached him with it.
I'd like to recognize the superintendent.
Thank you. Just with regards to the long-term plan, Ms. Larva, again, we will be working over the summer with the new headmaster and with the personnel involved to come up with, you know, a budget footprint and equity issues across both the sports and the clubs and come back to the committee so that we can clearly articulate what the criteria was and that this administration is confident that all the equity issues have been addressed.
I do understand that that's, I'm specifically talking about the $10,000 seed money. And does that work? How does, how does that?
And, and again, I haven't had a conversation with Mr. Georges or Mr. Someris on this particular point, but I'm thinking that that criteria would need to be set and then based on that criteria, we would determine what clubs and sports events would still be in play. And, you know, with, again, working with our union and if we can address the coaching issues, assistant coach issues of stipends as well as the clubs, who's to say that it couldn't, you know, some would be all addressed? But again, we will have to work together to do that, or I do not see that it would be possible otherwise. The $10,000 and perhaps either one of the gentlemen could speak further to their thinking around that, but I'm thinking that that would definitely be a great benefit to our students, but that, that money would be spent after we looked at all the things that I just mentioned.
Just a point, just a point of clarification. I'm not understanding the $10,000 as to going directly to student activities and sports. I'm understanding it as seed money to start a, a growth.
I mean, there's several issues here. One is, we had to look at what's going to happen tonight with the budget. In other words, I mean, something could have happened where the school committee decided to fully fund both budgets. It's a moot point after that, but...
It's not for $10,000, I'm taking it.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I'm just, you know, we have to wait, I had to wait, he had to wait to, I mean, but I think that's a very strong position the unions taking to start a donation towards meeting our students' need. But the superintendent's correct. I'll be working with the, you know, Ed Rosmaric as he's coming on board, and we're going to look at where we've been, in other words, what monies are available for student activities, what monies are available for athletics, and then what monies we have to raise. And this is a very good start. And the unions also talked about doing some other events that could help towards raising funds, realizing a tight budget situation. So it's a whole number of issues, but we have to take one step at a time. What is the committee doing tonight? What's left? What should we handle? And then we'll work with the committee. I mean, this is a good point, working with, talking with Jay Lang about, you know, stipends and, you know, what does that mean? So there are contractual issues, there's funding issues, there's fundraising issues, all of these, but, I mean, we can only come together with a program when we have an idea of what the needs are, the exact needs are.
Madam Superintendent, then, Ms. Martin.
I think just as a follow-up point, I would have some concern, given, again, the fact that our coaches, assistant coaches in our particular contract right now are above industry standard. So I really do think that this presents an opportunity for us to fix that so that those costs in our, in our contract are of industry standard. We greatly appreciate all the work our coaches, our assistant coaches, everything they do for us, but unfortunately, we're, we are now in the position of picking between, you know, coaches and assistant coaches and obviously teacher salaries. So we just want an industry-standard contract and at that point, because we don't want to necessarily bring additional monies into the system from our business community or other community groups that will sponsor us if it's not an appropriate stipend based on industry standard.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, then, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I think that that's a very important distinction that the superintendent has made too. You know, I agree that the idea of being able to have a really ambitious, I mean, fundraising drive is what this is. I mean, the, the reality that we all recognize is that these are not the types of activities that should really live and die based on fundraising. They should be part of a standard school department budget, and it is just the kind of extremity of our situation right now that has even put us in this position of having these conversations. You know, I have concerns about a fundraising effort when there are so many fundraising efforts going on. I mean, having another, another golf tournament, having, you know, the Campaign for Excellence has been such a mark of pride for our high school, and I know specifically for our headmaster, rightfully so. So it's, you know, and Friends of Lowell High are already actively and aggressively fundraising. Are we putting more and more pressure on these same, these same problem solvers? In my mind, I do look at the stipends as, at the very least, a comprehensive conversation that we need to have. And I think that, I'm, that, you know, our, UTL president has said the same thing. And I think that that's great to hear that and that, I think that really bodes extremely well for us that we'd be able to look at the stipends in terms of coaching and clubs and make really good decisions for kids and for the educators who take it upon themselves to do this, to do these jobs. And I think that's how we solve this problem in the short term, in a way that also supports it during the long term. In my mind, the $10,000 would be a kind of cash-in, cash-out kind of situation, and I don't know if that mirrors what my colleague was describing because I'm not necessarily seeing it as an investment opportunity that would then turn into an endowment that would support this. I don't know if that helps clarify at all. But I also want to say, you know, obviously, our discussions get pretty far-flung and we talk about a lot of different topics. In case anyone hasn't noticed that, thanks a lot, Mr. Leary, for chuckling as I said that. But I think it's, it's important to, for us all to recognize that we're in a, all of us are in an extremely high-pressure situation, and I think that we are all better served if we do try to maintain kind of the logical, rational approach to this. I don't doubt that there are passions that get inflamed as kind of offhand comments get made. I don't certainly want to be a part of that. I just want to say that the respect that I think this committee and that this administration has shown for teachers and for the vocation that they serve and for the amazing job that they do in the city of Lowell, I don't think that's ever been called into question. And the care and concern that individuals who dedicate their lives to this, to this effort has never been questioned. And the conversations we're having, whether it be around, you know, health insurance or furlough days or, or, you know, salary reductions, none of them are meant to be any kind of indictment on the quality of, of teaching in this city or on the commitment of teachers in this city. As hard as it is for us to make that separation, it really, it's, that's the fact. It's a matter of us trying to respond to an economic reality, and the only terms and the only tools with which we have to respond are economically driven. So that's all we have as, as, as an option for problem solving. And I just say, you know, again, looking forward to having these conversations, perhaps not as much as Ms. Larva, who, it will be her first choice and will be much more exciting, I'm sure. But I think that coming into it with the attitude of, "None of this is meant to be an indictment and none of us is going to solve this problem on our own." So, you know, I, I just think that as we move forward, whether it's talking about stipends of, of coaches and, and club advisors, the same dynamic is going to have to be at play as we talk about teachers and, and administrators and every other kind of cut that we're considering right now.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty, then, Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just going to go back to the, the page that we're discussing in these particular cuts regarding athletics and the clubs. And I, just for clarification, we're not talking about cutting the ski club at this point, the, the ski team, the Alpine team. We're not talking about cutting any particular sport. We're looking at an overall cut to athletics. And the part, which I, I'm not going to repeat, it's been said, but this idea of really looking at the whole sports program and coming up with a fair way to do that is key to how we really play out the specifics of that cut. So tonight is not a cut to the Alpine ski team. It's not a cut to every assistant coach. It's a cut to the overall programs, and then we're going to work out how that goes forward. And then I have one question. When we look at the, the budget for 2009, 2010 projected, we're actually $33,000 over what we budgeted for athletics last budget cycle. I wonder if Mr. Lang could explain how we went over and what is the plan with these amounts that have been put forward to us to reduce the budget? Has that $33,000 been considered? Thank you.
Mr. Lang.
Sure. It's, it's not in athletics, it's in the stipends for the advisorships. Is that the line you're talking about?
I'm sorry, I was just looking at the bottom line. So it actually came out of activities. Okay, so could you...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It was activities, not athletics. The line was underfunded in '08, '09. As you can see, the actual came in closer to 140, and I missed it last year when we were putting the budget together. I underfunded that line at 107. I really should have funded it closer to the actual from '09. So this year, in the recommended budget, I think, in the white pages when we look through, I made the proper adjustment and it would have been budgeted somewhere around 100 and, say, 40. And then we made the cut, so I made the cut off of that 140 down to 72. So it's still, it's, it's, it's not technically cutting the program in half in the 107. It's taking the actual projection for the year and cutting that in half. So we're still leaving 72,845, and that was the budgetary error in my pot last year.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. Just quickly, in response, I guess, to the ski coach, I guess, you know, you were, I mean, that's a recommendation from the administration to cut the ski team, so he wasn't wrong. And I appreciate his comments. It was the only one that was recommended. I think what Ms. Doherty says I agree with, however, that this is something that's far from over from tonight's discussion. There's, and Ms. Martin presented it well. I think the stipend issue needs to be addressed. Mr. Georges clearly articulated it isn't anybody's fault. Over time, you know, decades, this has evolved, and now's the time to look a look at it because we are in a financial, you know, situation where we have to. It's nobody's fault, but we need to take a look at it and we need to make adjustments. Fundraising, I'm not too cool about it because I've done a lot of fundraising and you might come up with the money in one year, but the second year, that's an issue. People should be aware of the fact that the very, almost 110% likelihood, which is, can't get much more than that, you cut something, it's gone. You know, and so if you cut the ski team or you, you know, you cut the assistant coaches, that position's gone. So I'm not, although I'm thankful for the $10,000 seed money, you know, perhaps this could become an endowment running the sports program, I would suggest that's highly unlikely that that's actually going to happen. But I'm not trying to be unenthusiastic about that whole approach. Again, it's, it's, it's something, looking at the stipends and making decisions. You're cutting, we had to cut $1.1 million additional at some point. Where do you cut it from? And, and again, I'm not done with this because I don't like the fact that we're cutting sports and the clubs. I think that does have a direct effect on student achievement, which at the end of the day is absolutely why we're here. The rest of the stuff, it doesn't matter. It's student achievement. One other thing, I'll send with this. I don't think anybody's questioning the quality and the effort of the teachers in our schools. If, if someone took that statement, then I think, you know, you're, what Mr. Georges articulated tonight about people questioning teachers, I certainly don't. I couldn't do their job. It's a very difficult job. K through eight, you know, nine through 12 is a challenging job. However, we are faced with financial crisis. We're cutting $4 million. That eliminates over 30 teaching positions. It eliminates an assistant superintendent. These are facts. They're not friendly facts, they're just facts. And next year is not going to be any more pleasant, and the year after that isn't going to be more pleasant. And I heard people say, "Two years from now, it's going to be better." You don't know that. We're hoping it's better. And eventually, the suburbs who are not getting these Chapter 70 cuts are going to start giving pay raises to teachers, so it's going to get more challenging for us as the years go by. Doing the same thing over and over again does not work. The statements made over and over again make, make you feel good leaving here tonight, getting that emotion out, but it does not change the reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larva, then, Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things I just wanted to clarify that I certainly want to have the stipend issue addressed, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that the union is willing to have those conversations with us. I think it does need to be addressed and, and brought in line. And certainly, I did not look at the $10,000 as a solution to our issues. I was trying to recognize that it is a offer and has the potential of providing some funds in the future. It's not something, as Mr. Leary said, it's not something you can count on. Fundraising is up one year, down the next year. You can have a good event or a bad event, but the fact that, that they're trying to do something, to me, speaks volumes. When we look at the athletic cuts and the student activities cuts, I have very deep emotions. I, I look at these as, as the reason that a lot of kids stay in class so that they can participate in their sports. I have concerns with the plan that was presented to us. I understand that tonight we're, we're just looking at a number, but based on the scenario that I saw, I am extremely uncomfortable with the cuts that are, that are proposed in that document. And honestly, that's all I have to go on at this point is, is what was recommended. Can that change? Absolutely. Will that change? Most likely. But, but right now, looking at this, I can only base my opinions on the documents that were presented to us, and I'm just not comfortable with those cuts and, and would not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, then, Madam Superintendent.
I'm actually all set. I thought I had a mistake here, but I made the mistake.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
The high school did make recommendations with regards to the club and interscholastic cuts as per my request, but I, I just do want to say that, again, it's every intention of this administration to go through what the recommendations were after hearing the feedback from the committee, from the community at large. We do think that we need to aggressively work with our unions to address the stipend issue. If, in fact, we did that and we were successful in doing that, that would address a lot of these cuts. We do not want to cut any sports or clubs at the high school, but we will need help from the union in order to do that. That's the first thing that we would like, an opportunity, you know, to work with them to do that. And the second issue is, again, to sit down and to look at what exactly is the criteria that we're going to use and be comfortable with that to present. So instead of just presenting you the cuts, what's the rationale? What is the budget footprint for each of these clubs? What's the equity issues? Again, many of the good points that various committee members have brought forward, and so we would like an opportunity to look at those concretely so that I can say here that safety issues have been addressed, equity issues have been addressed. You know, they, recommendations were made to the administration, which were shared with you, but at this point, I think that's the best strategy for us, again, to vote a number, which we have done last week, and for us to be, you know, working on it over the next eight weeks or so.
Ms. Larva.
And I guess that really gets down to my main concern is, is the equity part of it. And I have to be careful here. Some of this I know from personal experience because my son is on the crew team, that it's one head coach for a boys and girls team, and we have several boys and girls team. The same thing as Mr. Zachara brought up, that, that his sport was the only one that was cut, both varsity and JV. You know, those are the things that concern me. You know, when you look at the size of the sports and, and how many kids are participating in it, and again, I understand it goes back to stipends and, and trying to set that up. I'm just a little leery that, that changing those stipends is going to add up to that kind of money. So I, in the back of my head, I'm thinking, yes, we can save a lot of this with, with addressing the stipend issues, but somewhere along the line, it's not going to add up to that $246,000. So that's, that's really where I'm, where I'm coming from. There's, there's, you know, when we looked at those proposed cuts, the equity across the line and, and how some of those decisions were made.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
I didn't, I think that's key to suggest that we're not looking for the unions to come up with $249,000 for the sports program. We're looking for working together to do it. A sports program can take some cuts. That's just a fact. We're looking for some help here because taking $249,000 worth of cuts significantly impairs the sports program to where it's not really a very effective program. Same with the, the clubs. We're looking for some working movement because some of it's out of line. We're not saying, "Guys, come up with $249,000 just for this one line item." We are saying some other stuff for saving teachers, obviously, but that's something that needs to be presented. We need to work... together to do it. And we cannot do it alone. And fundraising will not do it in the long term. Again, it's far from over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this page 20?
No. Move for vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Mrs. Baldwin.
Hi, Elizabeth Baldwin, 45, By Street. I just would like to first thank you all for this terribly difficult job. I don't know, I know that these decisions are horrible. But when we're looking at cutting in a population of very, very poor students and very, kids who don't have access to a computer, kids who don't have access to books, and we're looking at taking those things out of their curriculum, and then we're, and then we're talking about sports programs who, each of us has memories of high school that wouldn't be complete without our drama. Our, I had swimming, I had drama, choir, all these things, football, basketball, those memories of high school would be radically different. They teach kids so much. So we really need to try to keep those kinds of things in there, not at the expense of education, but as a supplement to the educational experience. We need to try to keep those. And all these kids who were here, who obviously had to go home for dinner and bed, they would have said the same thing. They really need those things in order to feel as though they've done something in high school. They feel connected to their peers. They learn teamwork. And I just, I don't know how you're making these decisions, but when you're looking at the bottom line of what a particular athletic team might cost per student, it seems to me that, I'm not going to make any friends here right now, alpine ski seems to me to be an expensive per student with a limited population. And I may be totally wrong there, but if we can, the more students we can get to keep a program would seem to me the better route to go. And I know the transportation costs for alpine ski are up there, as well as the lift tickets and the gear. But there's, there might be a way to get these kids to be able to keep whatever program, be it alpine ski, be it whatever else they might be missing. If we could, and I haven't heard anyone say it, maybe if someone could address this after I'm done, whether they could pay to play. And then there could be some fundraising for those students who can't afford to pay. But certainly, you know, if I wanted to keep an athletic program for my child, I would be willing to pay some money into it in order to keep it as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a motion by Mr. Leah to approve the items on page 20. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Larra.
No.
Ms. Leah.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
No.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays. Passes.
Your Honor?
Yes. Could I just address her one question, just that we have talked about the fees for sports, and at this time, we just don't want to implement any fees. So just to answer your question about the paying, pay to play, that's all. Well, right now, at this point, there's so many kids that can't pay that we're not going to do a fee. But we'll keep it under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 21, custodial and security. The total bottom line number for both personnel and non-personnel is $10,574,222. 10,574,222. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Larra. She's out? Okay. She's absent. Mr. Leah.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent. Approved.
On page 22, employee benefits and retirement under personnel. We have a, under total personnel, we have a number of 17,564,384.
Move for approval.
Move for approval by Mr. Leah. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Conway.
Can we just make a quick discussion or?
Sure. I just want to say that I probably have to vote present.
Because?
Because we've got health insurance premiums here.
All right. I will too. Sure. Thank you. Just since everything's out on the table, I just wanted to make a comment on this page. When we do discuss negotiations with our unions, we've all brought this up. There's items on this page, whether it's longevity or the sick leave buyback, you know, those things, if it's not going to be eliminated at this time or whatever reduced, it can certainly be, maybe the payments could be spread out. I mean, we could just discuss simple things like that that would leave us a little bit more cash for the upcoming school year and as they go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions on page 22?
Just quickly, just before we move approval on it, and obviously, I noticed the number is 16 million for the health insurance is 16,200,000. What were your discussions, you know, you had discussions regarding the utility accounts. What were the discussions? Do you have anything on the health insurance accounts as well with the city side?
Yeah. With regard to the health insurance, we had originally factored in because we didn't have the final number from Cook &amp; Company at the time when we put the recommendation out a week or so ago. And the estimated cost of the school department's health and dental programs, you can see, it's now 19,075,130. That's based on next year's rates and the, I think we talked about this, the different inflation factors for single plans versus higher plans. That was originally a lesser number. But also, the third line down from the other superintendent's recommended FY10 reduction was also lower because we budgeted in 65 and a half positions at 11,301. And now our actual average cost, because the plans have gone up, will be 65 and a half positions at 13,332. I put a little footnote on the page there. So that increases the deduction to 8,73,246. So when you take off the, well, you start at the 19,075. We take up money for all the people that are on grant or revolving funds. That's the 1,950. The savings realized from the reduction in staff are 16.5. We start with a 16,251,884 as the actual local budget appropriation that we need to contribute to the health. So that number at the bottom of that chart rolls up to the top line under health insurance premiums in the local budget. And then the others are just pretty much level funding. One thing I will mention to you, well, the current year fiscal '09 is the last year of our early retirement payment. We had 15 years that we had to pay the 100,000, 930. That was a flat rate. So this is the last year that we actually had to pay that. So I took that offset savings in fiscal '11. But aside from that, that pretty much walks you through it. The big change was the city and the schools will both budget 13,332 per FTE reduction.
Thank you.
Ms. Larra, then I'll recognize Mr. George's.
My apologies. Perhaps you already addressed this, the longevity payments. Is that something that is being phased out? I didn't think, I didn't realize that we still had longevity payments going on.
We do still have employees in the school system that were hired prior to whatever the date of the implementation of that. So every year, that dollar amount goes down as folks retire. I think when I first actually came, it was about a half million dollars a year, and it's continued to go down. So this year, we're projecting about 175,000. That'll be paid out. And the next year, we'll still have individuals adding up to about 165,000 in payments. But that is something over the years that will drop off.
Mr. George's?
Yes, Mayor Milonazo. Just something I want to bring to your attention. It has to do with, a couple of weeks ago, we had insurance advisory meeting. That's a public meeting, and some people were there. Jim Leary was there, and I think Jay was there too. What we found out from the, from the city manager at the time was the rates on health insurance are going up 10 percent. The actual rate itself was only going up 5 percent based upon claims against the fund. But as it had been the previous year when it went up, I think it was 20 percent, half of that additional premium was based upon having to refund the fund of money that Blue Cross works out of. Okay? Because for a number of years, it was underfunded. When we, people were getting 10 percent increases in health insurance for a number of years, we were at 2 percent or 2 and 1/2 percent. And so the fund itself, the working fund, was depleted significantly. So I think, you know, just the fact that it's really is, represents a 5 percent increase, 10 percent to you and 10 percent to me, but still 5 percent in actual claims against is pretty remarkable. We have had outstanding results. Cook &amp; Company will tell you by the self-funded aspect that went into place, you know, back in 1992, 1993 under Dick Johnson. There was one thing, though, that's kind of creating a problem, and that is that 10 percent is universal for all plans. The difficulty is that the city manager explained that the setup, the actual pricing of the family plan had always been at 2.1 times the cost of an individual plan. And I don't know where that number came from, but it was decades ago. Maybe it's because Blue Cross used it as a number sometime when they sold these products over the counter. But he indicated that based upon actuaries, he was going to 2.3 times the cost of an individual plan. And that next year, probably go to 2.6, which is substantial increase. What that really means is someone, for instance, in the network blue of the HMO is going to get an increase this year based upon that 10 percent of 432 dollars. But include the differential now going from 2.1 to 2.3 times the single plan, it's another $47. For the PPO, it's 469 plus another 176 dollars, for a total of 645. And the master medical is 528 plus another 198 for a total of 726. I just want to let you know that I did ask the city manager, I wrote a letter just asking that he might not go to the 1.3 compounding at a time when we might be asking teachers to try to do something to contribute and help fill the gap. I mean, it's awful hard for me to go to, I obviously represent a large number of women being, you know, it's a teachers' organization. What's that? What? No, well, I'm just, but a lot of these, a lot of, a lot of these, whether it's male or female, the fact is many of them are single households, are single parent households, and this impacts them tremendously. So by adding the additional 200 dollars or 175 dollars makes it more difficult, to be totally honest with you, for me to go to them and say, look, what can we possibly rearrange in deferrals or something else that we might want to help out. So I had asked the city manager to keep it at the 2.1, at least for this year. I spoke to him personally about it at Bill Samaras' retirement, and I have not received any word on that yet. I'm just saying that may negatively impact my ability to be able to work with the teachers since this additional, you know, 50 to 175 to 200 dollars is now being tagged on the top end. I believe it's within the purview of the city manager to do that, but I just want to let you know that does create a problem that I wish we could sort of modify. Might even consider the 5 to 10 percent increase to something a little more modest, considering half of that money is to replenish the fund. That's a sizable amount when you're talking about replenishing money. It's just a suggestion. I think it just makes it a little bit easier to try to move it forward. But I do want to let you know that difference of 2.3 to, now, the other thing is, just a quick thing, every single union in the city has people in the master medical program. Okay? Varying degrees by different units. On the school department side, we didn't have an option, we negotiated the option to the other plans with you three years ago. On the city side, people had an option of an HMO for a number of years because that had been negotiated directly at the bargaining table. I guess I just want to say, we, you know, we're certainly willing to help out and educate our members and move more people from more expensive plans. But preserving that option for people who need it is something that we feel strongly about, particularly when we know people who are benefiting from that particular plan, whether people think it's archaic or not or whatever. And as union members, yes, we are to some degree subsidizing the more expensive plan for those who need it. But Donna, if they need it, I'm in a much better place spending a few more dollars than being in a situation where I need the master medical because I'm fighting a debilitating illness that could be life threatening. So just as a value judgment, that's what we do as unions. So again, I think that puts in perspective, if there's any intervention that you can do as far as this additional 2.1 to 2.3 factor, that could be helpful in us being able to be more helpful in trying to close any gap that's there or returning some people that may not have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Lang. You know what? No, I'm not going to say anything because I'm just going to, no.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
I just want to make one quick comment, that we are currently in the open enrollment program period for our health insurance, and that any employees who want to switch over have until the end of the business day on Friday to do that. And my final point is, any school employee who does switch to a less expensive plan, we immediately see those savings on our side, on the school side. It immediately adjusts our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, Mr. Leary?
Just to quickly, and just to echo on that on a positive note, if you move from to the HMO, you get $1,200 in your pocket. I think it's half for the PPO. Mr. Lang, please correct me. So there's actually money you save, not only the city, which turns into saving teachers, but also yourself. You know, enough said, I guess. I mean, I don't know how to make it up at this point, but $1,200 you get if you move to an HMO. If everybody jumped, we'd save a million dollars, which means we could save a whole lot of teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Getting back to page 22. What's the wish of the committee?
Move approval.
Move approval.
I have already, Leah is seconded by Mr. Conway.
Okay. To reflect. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Larra.
Yes.
Mr. Leah. Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Present.
Present. Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Six yeas, one present. Approved.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just for safety concerns, am I allowed to change my vote to present? I forgot about that one.
Yes, you have, you have 24 hours to change your vote. So we can change it tonight. Okay. So five yeas, two present. Approved.
Thank you, June.
Page 23, rentals. Total dollar amount is $100,000. Move.
Question.
Question, Mr. Leah.
Throw you to Mr. Lang. Not to push my luck here, but we did move out of downtown. Shouldn't there be a saving in parking? I know we were under budget, but hey, a savings is a savings.
Savings is a savings, but you're not going to get one here. This $100,000 is actually for teacher parking and staff parking at the high school. When we used to be on Merrimash Street, both in the Bon Marche building and the Family Literacy Center lease on Palmer Street, the spots were factored into those particular leases for the garage on.
In the rent?
Yeah. What's the name of the garage? I forget now.
Roy.
Yeah. The one down.
Market Street?
Market Street. The Market Street Garage. So we didn't pay for that. It was part of the lease. We have always contributed $100,000 in cash towards the parking spots in the city. And I think four, five years ago, when the city increased the parking rates, we had only budgeted $100,000 cash. That thing came in mid-year. So the city had us continue to budget just $100,000 in cash. And at the end of the year, we spend more than that. It's about, oh, maybe 175. So they apply a $75,000 credit. We give them a credit on the net school spending report for anything over the 100. But the 100 cash is actually to pay for the high school. No, it isn't tied into the Bon Marche or the Literacy Center lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? We need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leah, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Larra.
Yes.
Mr. Leah.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas. Approved.
Page 24, capital L, total non-personnel costs, $350,000. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leah. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Larra.
Yes.
Mr. Leah.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas. Approved.
Last page, page 25, non-personnel suspense account. Again, based upon the votes taken tonight, are we putting 600? tonight, are we putting $637,940 in that account, or is it a different number? Madam Superintendent?
I'd like Assistant Superintendent Lang, please, to walk us through this page.
One, as we, as I think it was Ms. Martin made earlier, the request, the $100,000 from the alternative programs, we have not, we don't have a line item in the budget just specifically for alternative programs. What I'm going to suggest we do, because it's a line item budget, we have to record that somewhere. If the committee would be willing to go back to page 11, which is the special ed instruction for non-personnel, we have a line item for the McQ Riverside Alternative School Program. It's the only actual line item in the budget that deals with alternative school programs. Not that I'm saying we're going to cut the $100,000 from this program, but I would recommend we decrease that amount just for bookkeeping from the 798,203 to 698,203, and then we'll move $100,000 to the suspense account. This is the only real place in the budget I can see doing that transaction at this point. So if the committee would be willing to re-entertain page 11 and fund the first line for the McQ Riverside Alternative School Program at 698,203, and then I'll move the $100,000 to the suspense account.
Mr. Leahy? Motion to...
Yeah, to approve the recommendation.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Assistant Superintendent Lang to move the McQ Riverside Alternative School Program down from 798,203 to 698,203, and move that $100,000 into the suspense account. Second by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Larraebah?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas. Approved.
Chair recognizes Mr. Lang.
So then if you go to page 25, the...
Excuse me, but shouldn't we change the bottom line item on page 11 to $100,000 less to $6,000?
Okay, good catch. Okay. Motion to change the bottom line number on page 11 from $6,640,300 to $6,540,300. Motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Bottom line. Ms. Larraebah?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas. Approved.
Mr. Lang?
So if you go back to page 25, the non-personnel 9,000 series suspense account, you've moved three line items of funding, $300,000, that was for tuition, 237,940, which was for professional development, and then $100,000 attributed to alternative school programming. So your bottom line on page 25 tonight would be $637,940.
Motion to approve the recommendation by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Larraebah?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas. Approved.
In conclusion, I would recommend that the school committee vote to approve a bottom line budget of $136,555,345 for this evening, and then recess to reconvene next week.
First, approve the bottom line figure.
Motion to approve the bottom line of $136,555,345.
So approved.
So approved by Mr. Leary, second by Mr. Leahy. And to also recess until...
Oh, no, then we'll call on this, then we'll recess. Is that all right with you? Ms. Larraebah?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas. Approved.
Motion to recess until, we have a date. Motion to recess by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leary. Do we have a date for the next budget hearing?
We don't have any dates at this present, Your Honor. I don't know if...
Madam Superintendent?
I know that June was looking today to see if this chamber was available, if it was available for next Wednesday, but that has yet to be confirmed. I'm sure that could be televised.
We'll just recess until we're notified. Ms. Dougherty?
My other concern is that we have time to meet with our union leadership too, so that would be my only thing with jumping right back here without at least having a discussion.
Right. Good point.
So we've got to try to fit...
Okay. All of us in favor of recessing? Signify by saying aye. Close the vote. Thank you all very much.
10:50, 10:56. Sorry, I didn't mean to.